So we will call this evening's meeting to order. Welcome to everyone who is joining us this evening. I'd like the news to show that all council members, Councilor Sam Walton, are in attendance this evening along our department heads and managers and our C A O. And anybody who visited our line?
Yeah.
This is our line, but we do have some reducing council, so welcome to all of you. Thank you for joining us this evening. Item three is approval of the agenda.
Councilor Smith would move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
We've been seconded to approve this evening's agenda. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Ms. Carey. Item four, approval of the minutes from our previous council committee of the whole meeting. On July, June twenty fifth.
So move Councilwoman.
Second, Councilwoman.
We've been seconded to approve the minutes from our committee of the whole meeting. June twenty fifth. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Ms. Carey. Item five is conflict of interest. Anyone at the scene, you need to declare conflict of interest. Okay, we'll move on to item six. And we are adding a third item, item six point three. It'll be a presentation from April Orshur, so if we'd like to add that. Please do. We'll move to six one, response to request regarding water treatment about in the power.
Let's just call it. I think there's some flaws or whatever. So it's the same issue.
Okay. That's very good news. We'll move on, that's part of item eight two. Okay, so we'll do that, thank you. And item six two, condition of Route five seventy five. Dale Weathers here this evening as well as community chairman. And would you like to address the council this evening?
Oh. Excuse me, but I can't hear you.
We'd like to hear you talk.
Um, I guess, I don't know, I haven't had anything wrote up here, I guess, and whatever. I'm not much of a speaker, so I'm gonna read this off here like a, like a whatever.
Make sure you get it right side up.
Yeah. If you want. Sure. Well, I, we're talking to Stuart here, and some like facts here might not be necessarily just exactly right either. Uh, Googled some of this, so anyway, but here we go. So I begin with, before, um, before my time, as I have been told, was used, the, the, five seventy five was used for the local football to begin with. And every election, they promised they were gonna pave this road. So anyway, as time went on, and, and what happened in, Stuart says, I, I think nineteen eighty seven or eighty five, Frank Young, Doug, um, was put in play along with Allison along. And he actually got this road chipped. And years before that, for years and years, this is their road. So anyway, there's never been anything done to that road as far as any major things. Other than in, uh, oh, what was it, ninety two, the Chippsey old path, like the, I'm gonna call it the Hartland path. The rest was never been touched as far as any research or anything done to it. Uh, and anyway, uh, whatever, it, it just kept on. It just, what it is, that, that Cloverdale path is just a, just a bunch of patches. And to the point now is dangerous. Like there's, there's places, there's places where people going around the road, going around the bumps and stuff. I don't know the shoulder of the road, now the shoulder of the road's got a hole in it. Like it's ridiculous, really. Uh, anyway, uh, some of the calls I made, uh, didn't get much response, really, as far as talking. I'm gonna say to the little guys, uh, one of the last, the, the last people, which is Jason Demersen. I don't know if he's related to you or not, but he's the, he's, uh, he's the road supervisor for that area. I'm almost a lot out of here. And, uh, anyway, what, why I said to him, I told him, I told him it's dangerous. So my initial response to that was that, uh, uh, basically, when he, he said, maybe you expect me to take my hand off of where the patch and road is going to fix this road. I had actually asked, and I told him, I said, it should be within a few days, it should be signed on to us. Anyway, basically, I was announced, but I didn't understand, I don't, I don't know what part of the dangerous part he said. But anyway, that's as far as I'm saying. And anyway, it, it just goes on and on, starts to drop any of these road people. My, my answer, maybe I'm not listening, probably, but important, I guess, but, but anyway, that's all I can say.
You like that, didn't you? Sure. Well, that's.
Honorable mayor, fellow, uh, councillors, uh, just like my father-in-law said, uh, the five seventy five has been an issue ever since, uh, Marcy and I moved back or moved here. Uh, and it progressively keeps getting worse. Uh, the interesting thing is, is I, I think of first responders, uh, you know, policemen and firefighters that gotta make it out to our area. I think about that, I think about how terrible those roads are. I think about all the damage that has happened to people's personal vehicles traveling that route. Uh, my father-in-law's Jeep, uh, just, it just constantly needs repair because of our traveling back and forth, as well as we run into issues with our personal vehicles. Uh, I consistently call usually once a week, uh, to Fredericton, uh, and the D T I, and I get the same thing, they give up a ticket and they, they just wait till the next call, the following week, for another ticket from me. But it's very frustrating for us, uh, you know, to not see any result or anything coming, coming forth. Uh, this year they did patch, but it didn't last very long at all. And again, that's not what's required. What's required here is a full job, uh, from start to finish, not just patches. Um, it just doesn't seem to make it. Um, another interesting thing here is that, uh, uh, you know, we've got a lot of elderly people out in Cloverdale that rely on, you know, on the healthcare system, uh, quite frequently, and ambulances, first responders come out. Uh, all of these things we need to consider, and we need to think about, uh, and the importance of making that road better for everybody involved. They have had counters in the past, I don't know what the result was on that, but I know for a fact that the Bull Hill Road, the five seventy five gets a lot of use. And it's not just, uh, my father-in-law and I and our families, it's people from all over that use that road to access Hartland. Uh, so, you know, if anything, what we're looking for here this evening is just some help with the, uh, with this endeavor moving forward. Uh, you know, trying to be a part of, of the L S D and Hartland as a whole. Uh, we're hoping that everyone can help us out with this issue, because it most certainly is an issue that needs to be resolved.
Uh, definitely, Mayor, when you're, can you toss for the D T I, this section of the highway has been?
It's been brought up every meeting.
Yeah, it's about that.
And I can tell you that ever since we had an obligation, and probably long before that, and Councilwoman probably has to know before that part of that. As a council, we always try to cut dialogue with B P I about all of the entry roads, in and out of the county highway. So the one oh five, which is on Main Street, is a designated highway. One oh three across the, comes from Cupboard Bridge in New Edge or Hunt, and through that, and through the New John funding bridge. The Rockland Road. And it's interesting that the one oh three, about three or four years ago, was basically research was from Northampton up to what I call Deep Creek, okay? And there was two kilometers before you guys are, and we didn't do it. So twenty-six kilometers in a row, and then stop. And that's similar to what happened in Cloverdale, only you saw some aggression on the one oh four up there, where the first year at the county line, you know, we hit two point three kilometers. And, oh, good road, and boom. And over the period of probably six or seven years, that's now being completed into the whole street. But every time we have these discussions with the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, we usually speak with the district engineers of Ashville, like, the regional supervisor, Tim Martin, the bridge supervisor, as well as his fourth person on that, who's that one? But, uh, we've met with them individually, we've met with them collectively as a region. Uh, the C A O and the mayor, and we've talked in regional meetings earlier in the theater, and we had an opportunity to meet one-on-one with the D T I. We continually bring up the condition of the five seventy five, because it is a free road to argument. People that, uh, work and shop and have business feelings in Hartland, travel that road, get down and forth. Uh, so we are a partnership of concerners of the five seventy five. And that debated continuously, including this year. Uh, but we have meetings scheduled with the D T I before the end of the year, and we're gonna bring it up again.
That'd be wonderful. I know that some of the names that you mentioned, Sebastian Roy and Tim Martin, those are individuals that I've spoken to as well.
Yeah.
And so we've been, this is a constant thing every year, every week. And, uh, you know, it's, it's to the point where the road should actually be closed. It's dangerous. And, you know, for people like us, we can go around a long way, but to take up the five seventy five, it's dangerous. And, uh, I don't wanna see anybody go off the shoulder of the road trying to avoid us. And, and they're not populars, they're, they're craters. And, uh, to the point where a side-by-side or an A T V would be the only thing that I, you know, take.
I mean, you guys, the red light, like for a four wheeler.
No, it isn't, sir.
Well, okay. I'm the one that invited these two people here, because I'm the one thinking that our government isn't taking no interest in doing nothing for that road. It's been there for fifteen years in the condition that it's in today. The repairs on the road has never been done, so I would say that if we cannot get the results from the people that we've been talking to really long, then we should go over them, because it's at a point that the fire service is not gonna use that road anymore, because it is tearing trucks all to pieces, getting over it. And so if they want the fire service to stop in Cloverdale, then they're gonna be responsible for it. I want them to know that they're gonna be responsible, and I ask them to come tonight for that reason.
Well, you've been with us when we talked to our M L A on the five seventy five, and you brought that up.
And it never come up, nothing. So I'm telling you that we need to go over the above where you've been so far, because that road has never been repaired for going on ten to fifteen years right now. They have no interest. It is now, Prendergast, they haven't even repaired the hole that had been there for three years that they never repaired. This spring, they've never repaired the hole that had been there from last year. They have no interest in doing it. So I'm saying, the people that you're talking to are not listening. We need to go over the above.
People that we are talking to.
I know, that's what I'm saying, as council, the people that we are speaking to are not listening, because they're not doing nothing for the road. And I'm just saying, if they wanna be the ones to sign on the dotted line and say they will not have a fire service up there unless they're going out the long way to not travel on that road, then I'd like to have their names put on that paper.
Well, same with Dale, before the meeting started. I think that the five seventy five is in such poor shape that it's no longer a road project. It's a capital project.
Exactly. But it's been a capital project for going on ten years.
I know.
And it's time for them to, somebody else to take the reins besides the people that we are talking to and go somewhere with it. And it's no different, when we talk about the five seventy five, it's no different than the one oh five from Lower Brighton to Hartland for two kilometers. The last two times they've done that road, over the last twenty years, the last two times, they left that two kilometers out for some reason, from Lower Brighton to Hartland. Is there a reason why they're doing it? Coming down that hill, I Prendergast watched a gravel truck run into a car because it dropped off the side of the road, and then trying to get back up on the road to re, to go around holes that have been there going on ten years. That happened within the last two weeks. So I asked these people to come tonight, because the complaints should only, not only be the five seventy five, it should be the one oh five here, that we are not getting no people listening to what we're talking about.
You've been in the room when we discussed that.
I know, but it isn't the right people, I guess, because they're not doing nothing about it.
I don't hear you tonight.
Yes.
Tim, what was the difference to go in five seventy five or come in through the one oh four vehicles for yourselves?
To go around, yeah.
But to go around, what would the time be?
Oh, I don't know, fifteen minutes, maybe?
At least that much.
Give or pay?
Two, five kilometers.
Oh, one.
Give or pay?
Give or pay? And the interesting thing is, is we've watched the, the patching, you know, and, and it's just to the point where, like I say, it's beyond the patching. The road can't do its homework completely.
They haven't got no interest in patching anymore this year, I can tell you that now. What they've done, they put a few patches on and took one load of asphalt and come in that road. As far as they could, they left about probably eighty percent of the potholes with that one load that they put on that road.
And the road supervisor had informed me that, first of all, said, go slow and make sure you go around the bumps.
Yeah, I put you in the ditch.
And then he said, look, if, if this is what you're looking for, maybe, maybe there's a chance at the end of the summer, once we're done all of our work, we may be able to come in there and do a few more holes for you. That was the response that I got.
That's immersive.
And I don't necessarily think that that's right at all.
It is, there's not only you folks coming in town, it's us going up there too.
That's right, absolutely.
Well, there's, there's nurses, and there's, even at one point, I had reports, someone, I'm so glad I heard it, it was a doctor from off the road there, not making out of the reference, right?
I know he was.
And.
I know he was.
You know? Anyway, he said it from the hospital, but they're invaded. Like, there he was in the ditch.
Don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong. Council has took it to where we're supposed to. But I'm feeling at this point that we're not going to the right people, because they had no intentions of doing anything with that road.
Who are you, like, people?
I don't know, you'd better find out.
Yeah, so Richard Ames is a, is a minister of the transportation.
Perhaps you could get him out for a tour? Absolutely. That would be a good thing, just to see it. And, uh, you know, another thing that's interesting is, is, uh, people come from all across Canada, that we see, you know, motorhomes and traffic traders and all of these things. They must think that's quite an embarrassment when they travel that way. You know, how horrible the road is in the state that the road's in.
And there is quite a few of those people, they're travelers, it's on the Vine Michael's. And I'm from British Columbia, that's where you get out from home.
Yeah, one from British Columbia the other day pulled into his yard because they had hit a bump so hard coming through the whole area.
And it's a shame, because you go a little further down, it's even, it's a, it's a drag.
Absolutely, it's perfect.
I just don't, I, you know, I'm glad, because I asked you people to come tonight, because I thought it should be brought up, because I know we've got the visits next, but at the same time, these visits aren't, seem to be doing any good in regards to the right roads that needs repaired. And they're needs repaired for the right reasons. The fire service, and along with all the other cars that are going through that road. Because I'm telling you, I Prendergast watched, like I said, an accident down here happening on the one oh five we've been here, coming down the head, the road dropped off so far. And while they were patching, myself personally went and asked the patch crew, they said, fill that hole in, and they kept it ongoing by it. So I don't know what you'd have to do. And they know the dam, you know, the damages could happen off that road. And that's no different than the damages that could happen on the Bull. Because right now, the five seventy five, you're traveling completely on the other side of the road, on the other end, to get around the one hole.
Absolutely.
And, and they're on the wrong side of the road completely.
The sad part was, what I'm hearing is that they know, let's shake the road again. They, they know it for years, and they're kind of bad any of those.
So we continue. I'm glad to see you this time.
Thank you so much.
Well, great, we'll commit to you, we'll continue to bring that up.
But, but, so, don't stop calling me.
Okay.
The family, that was one thing, just again, I'll bring up this emergency, he told him not to call you. There you go, did you not?
Yeah, it was just, you know, the tickets, everything has to stop. You know, it's just an abundance amount, and like I say, I call usually once a week to, to report on the five seventy five and how bad the road is. But it's just, it was one of those things, and to remain patient and calm about the whole scenario and the situation is one of these things that you, you try your best to do. But it was very frustrating, very frustrating to hear a road supervisor or somebody say certain things like that, of that nature. You know, go slow around the bumps, uh, you know, really technically, like I say, is that dangerous? It needs to be closed, we need to do something about it, and I appreciate everything for anyone tonight.
We will continue to advocate over the past.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna much harder to give that phone number. That's no. That's, that's the number you call and you end up dropping the answering. And live answering service in Fredericton, it's, I mean, it's every time you call, they, they create a ticket.
Yeah, we've got that number.
Yeah.
I will take another one, man.
Okay. And we want to item six three, and I would like to echo Orshur, to speak to the council this evening.
I'm here because of a neighbor that I'm having problems with, and the other neighbors. I think I'm wasting my time, because I called him down, and told him, and it's been going on for ten years. The songs he moved in, and he thinks he's above the law. And he burns toxic stuff, we can't keep the windows open or air conditioning on sometimes, because of the smoke, you know, the stench. And.
God, the wish.
And I'm just getting frustrated that I'm gonna do something with myself, and I have no quality in life up there. I had just retired a few months ago, so I'm home all the time. I have time when I can put my laundry on the line, when I ran his schedule. Because, you know, and when he's homeless, where he'll be burning, he burns twenty-four sevens, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And as they go on, and I, when my father is living, he had lung cancer, and he hasn't put up with it. And I'm just getting tired of it, getting tired of calling the cannon, and they have been up there, but he thinks he's above the law. And when I left tonight, he was out around the pit. And, uh, and to be honest with you, he made us talk somewhere, he said, he's picking up something. I, I, I can't prove it, but I, I know a lot of things still were out there, and he's. But anyway, he's just. And Drew's been nice to him, she's got long pipes and has no bed, and she's been sick with it, because of these fires, a lot of it. And they have to set up a water system out back in your house, so they can turn it on, so they're taking the town water, and they shouldn't be. And to keep the smoke down coming in their house. And I'm just. I'm done with it.
Pastor Walton, we've taken notice to the citizen, haven't we?
Yes. And he's, he's running for other people, once they have a page in the fire pit.
Well, we just put through a new fire bylaw. Is there not something we knew about that up there?
There's two types of fire in the bylaw, within air fire, and then the burning blast, and then recreational fires, being a fire pit or fire cones, the barricade. And he's the second type, where that case is the second type. And, um, under the bylaw, um, where the current pit is, uh, you can comply for that. Really, there's not, we, so you can face noncompliance, because with recreational fires, or you may recall, there are no limits, only, there's no limit to the number of fires you can burn, no limit to the time of day you can burn, or how many hours in the way you can burn. So also.
What about what you can burn?
There are limits on that, but that's, um, that's obviously a challenge we can to enforce for the fire's firsthand inspection, and you know, the fire is here, that's why I'm inspectors are not available, and it's difficult.
Fire chief's been up there and spoke to him, and what did he tell you? We should put that back, I'm asking him.
He also has a burn barrel too.
Yeah, so.
There are.
Well, did we not talk about, um, was it taking photographs or things like that for others that noticed it when the materials that's all on are being used?
I did that, I was told, take a picture, which I can't walk over rough ground that good. And I could've failed, nobody knows, and all good, take pictures, and nothing else, nothing's done, I sent them down.
Well, and the other question I had was that, um, with certain hours of the day, do you include some, sort of hour, you can't be burning?
Well, that, uh, that was a discussion, as we looked at the fire bylaw, and I believe it was council's decision to not place, there are restrictions of open air fires, and nine o'clock, nine P M, but not on recreation, because we might imagine people going clean fires and so forth, and, so it's always, that was a kind of line where the, 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 what we, where we came down on regulation, so.
Technically, in this case, if it is a fire, which is allowed to have, if the smoke is going straight in the air, the minute it starts going along through somebody else's property and disturbing them, then he is to extinguish that. And that is in our bylaw.
He also walks away from his shoe, the night I took the picture of the burger, you know, get that to the house, it was just going into the driveway. That's another danger.
All forms are known for that.
Well, here's a couple things here. Now, one is, of course, we're a council, and it's, one doesn't necessarily focus on one case per se, one person or whatnot. I mean, speak in general terms of what the bylaw allows, or no, it doesn't. Uh, there are forms provided, um, if the fire isn't attended, there are fines for suit close to another unit's property. There are fines that the smoke is, not for law, and says, is blown in the neighbor's property for a period of, though it's not specified. Decal committee event creates a nuisance. Um, and so those things exist, what does not exist, as I said, is time of day, number of fires. Uh, and in terms of recreational fires, we have specifically permitted, as to say, burn barrels on, uh, fire pits, uh, fire twines is, uh, type two by a hardware store, of course, um, and so forth. And that was, uh, sort of deliberate intention, those were all, um, those are all allowed. So, um, it's, and the two elements that, uh, you know, that may allow for, um, regulation, um, the type of substances and the attendance to, in the, the bylaw for it, they will say that all fires could be constantly attended. Um, they have to be, you know, someone has to be present and able to leave the fire a little bit well in control or whatnot, uh, be able to extinguish it, be there, you can't leave your fire for long, you know, for a period of time, you're turning. The challenge of that, of course, is that, uh, you would, that would require, you know, someone to, you know, be actively, uh, able to interdict, uh, at night, uh, late at night, weekend, whenever you're home. So, and then by the time the fire may be attended again, or the substances may not be there, it's, it's an inherently difficult thing to be enforced, not say it's impossible, but it's just, there are natural complications or difficulties in enforcing those pit where.
Thing is, he knows he's being a nuisance, and he knows no one's gonna stop, and he's gonna keep right on doing it because of who he is.
Well, I would say the statutory.
Well, I would say the statutory question or challenge for councils is is, um, you know, whether one gave is practical matter, uh, putting time limits on recreational fires and not just open air. And then maybe restrictions on a number of fires, uh, can have that kind of thing, although if obviously you did that, you someone would have to keep score. Someone would have to note that you burned four days in a row, five days, seven days. All those things become difficult. Time of day is probably the easiest. Uh, I don't know if there's any other simpler direct way of regulating those fires other than what we already have in the bylaw. And like I say, those fires in recreation.
Well, I think maybe one of the questions I'm hearing come forward is at what point do we sanction, uh, resident for perpetually doing things that are in violation of our current bylaw? If if there've already been two visits, two letters or what have you, warnings issued, at what point do we, uh, increase the consequences to help someone correct or change their behavior?
Uh, again, this is an area where we're trying to get a particular case, which is, um, the council meeting on general policy, but in this case, there have been adjustments. The location of the fires has been changed over time. They were at the rear property closer to the neighborhood property than they're now. Um, at the opposite means a property fairly distant, um, from, uh, you know, the people who have been adversely affected by them before. So that was an improvement to the burn barrel, although, uh, anyway, is not being used. It's a primary nail to fire pit. So those things have been adjusted and it also be noted, like, um, the violations, as you say, uh, again, the types of fires being burned now are complying, uh, spare, uh, exempting information on what's being burned and is constantly attended. And from the location, most of the employment size of fire and so forth, they comply.
So if it's questioning materials, could we not have a bylaw enforcement officer stop in and survey the property to see what's there to be burned for combustible materials? I mean, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what he's burning, but if it's silicate plastic or, you know, if it's anything that's not allowed based on the bylaw, then maybe that would be examined.
I don't know that. I mean, not to, again, locate this in the spot. The challenge is, of course, uh, it really matters what is actually burned as opposed to what may hypothetically be burned or might be, you know, used or not. It only matters when you actually do burn. Uh, finding non banned substances near a fire pit when there isn't a fire there, or even when there is, is not burning those substances. It only matters that you uh, essentially taught on the act.
So so in essence, he's being a nuisance and there's nothing we can do to stop it?
Uh, but I'd say the one, I think the most practical further measure the town can, it's not without consequence and it's not without, um, the people who might wanna have campfire elsewhere is to limit the time of day. You could have a rule that no, uh, fires after eight o'clock in the night or something like that on the weeknights. Uh, that's potentially, so that's something you could do to further enhance for.
What about, and and again, I'm not a bylaw expert in other municipalities, but are there would we have the option to add to bylaw that on a third fraction, maybe your your right to do that event is suspended for one year? Kind of like, I get caught speeding to be done in a row. I guess send a letter saying you can't drive. Then there's a time, if time progresses and then I think about what I've done at all, when I get my license back and perhaps I don't speed it again. So I'm asking that, what, at what point does a town have limits to make that clause in the bylaw? Cause stopping someone with a twenty-five dollar fine or fifty dollar fine doesn't do anything. But perhaps after multiple offenses of the same offense, when they lose their right to do all that B I D?
Well, one of the things that Ms. Walsh brought up was the smoke going, you know, open windows, there are these things impacting the neighborhood. It's not going straight up in the air and dissipating into the atmosphere. It's being blown into the neighbors. If that is the case, is there an opportunity for us to do some type of enhanced surveillance? And say, indeed, the wind is above a certain kilometers per hour, you need to put fire.
Should put the fire out if it's a nuisance to your neighbors.
The bylaw, the bylaw does state that. And it is, if if his fire, if his smoke is disturbing the neighbors by it blowing on their house, or whatever the case may be, then that is a legal, he's supposed to extinguish his fire. If it is blowing upon somewhere else. Now, if it is not, there's nothing in there that'll stop him from having his fire and and continue to have it as long as it is raising in the air and not going on to a neighbor's house. The minute it goes on a neighbor's house, then he is being a moppel at that point.
How do we enforce that in Canada?
It doesn't like
Well, the the challenge again is that, uh, we have three doors available, like most places, let's say ninety-five or eight to five. Right? Fires tend to be burned, not always after that. And on weekends when we don't have resources and our bylaw officer is not Fulton officer and you guys never felt it. Speaking periodically with some other matters, so the challenge is enforceability. I I don't know the answer, um, council pattern. Those things could be added to bylaw, but it requires a course of first there. There's already an escalating fine, uh, structure in the bylaw. The fines get, you know, higher as you average, you know, subsequently, you could also look at that, although that should be, uh, anytime you, uh, do something like implement a ban for a year of an activity, that should have to do with impact is would hold up in court, um. So I I wouldn't necessarily feel confident just saying that would absolutely be a law, but it probably would, but the bigger challenge i- enforcing is very tricky and activity takes place after hours and
But if my if if my neighbor has a fire and it's blowing in my window, if we do, I call if it's seven thirty on Saturday night. Do I videotape the smoke coming in and play it back Monday morning? Do I? In fairness, it's a legit question.
It's it's a unusual circumstance that, and, uh, yeah, at at the end of the day, uh, and I I can't sit here and say in St. John Muck in Toronto, Halifax, I deal with similar, uh, situation. I think we have here kind of unusual case and you have a high, you know, volume you know, burner, we'll say, and that's an exception with high number of flames. Yeah, and that needs a very difficult problem.
As a fire chief, is that is that law, that goes well as a bylaw apartment, that smoke cannot blow into the neighbor's property or house? Is that is that something that's
Well, as far as wind goes, like I've been at my property and now it broke in a fire trial and I've had natural resources to stop in and I said, you weren't supposed to pick up, put that fire. I put the fire.
Natural resources and I can do that in town, you know?
No.
But somebody should be, somebody should.
Restriction for that area. They've gone into it and we followed their instruction.
This is why we took so long to what we thought was covering all of our bases with that fire button. And that went on for months and we thought, you know, we eliminated things, we've added things to try to make it very accommodating for all of our citizens. Um, you cannot police human behavior and common business and such and this is the other thing we considered was having a burn, like not burning at all, which people were not in favor of because everyone likes to have recreational fire.
Well, I get worried that April's gonna have to do something about this herself and can't we help? I mean, gee.
Okay, is it safe to say that there there would be certain times of day if, that the fire wouldn't bother you if they're burning the right material?
Uh, probably.
Or if it don't burn, if there's no wind and a person's burning clean wood, I mean, that's that's
Fire pits, it's just that, why burn it twenty-four seven? But and and expecting our health. And I mean, at one time, I was in the head of my house, my legend was I had to close on a hot summer night because of the smoke. And I could suffocate because it's so hot up there. Fan won't, and I had a fan, but that was it. And I had to close the windows because I couldn't stand smelling the water.
I I I just wanna explain the difference though. Is when it comes to the fire department, it's not the policy of a fire department to look after people and make sure they're burning their fires right and things of that nature, you know, if it becomes something that's going to involve catching something on fire or or something of that nature, then it becomes our problem and we can have it put in. But we do not, as a fire department.
In nuisance fire.
Right. The smoke line, that is not where we look after. It's just not there. And so therefore, it's our guy that we've got hired now to look after that. And I'm sorry, you know, I mean, if he's now away, but it's not my problem. You know, if he's got a problem, this guy's getting made aware of it and he's gonna be here to look after it. And if that means he's gonna come here until the day that he that he can see this, which is pretty early day, and he's gonna come here maybe two or three evenings till that is handled. And that's what it has to be, whether he lives in ten but two or plaster house or in Fredericton or whatever the case may be. It don't matter where he lives, not us. If he's got a problem, he should be the person to be here to make sure it's handled and looked at at that time. So if we've got an evening problem and it's happening quite frequently, then we need to notify this person and he need to be, needs to be looked after.
Let's be clear about that. That's not a really a full fledged solution in the sense that these fires that are being burned right now comply with their bylaw if there's not something exceptional about them.
If they're not.
To get in bylaw enforcement, to drive three hours from where he is and spend an hour up there to have an in in the yard on the road to for something that is not technically a violation.
If if it's blowing on their residents, it is a violation.
When that's the case.
That's what I'm saying. Like if she's in a radical and that smoke fills her attic full, that's in the practice. That's right.
I I respectfully say this particular situation, uh, distance between homes, the direction of wind changes, there are various elements and there are woodstoves and fireplaces that burn three to six months a year, that burn smoke on people's houses for which there is no regulation. Not saying it's very bizarre, it's inherently difficult to do this. And it's very unlikely the wind, for example, will blow exactly the same direction to your coordination.
The, I I I like what Pastor Walton said though, uh, and the would be, you know, in this particular situation, from multiple neighbors and saw a lot of these type complaints before. And if it's a daily and and you know, ongoing and and we're still hearing about the acrostic materials, so they're there. You know, what would the horn be in saying to our enforcement officer, we'd like to have you here three days this week? Three evenings, whichever, um, just to do a roundabout and check on a few things, um. We're paying for services, we contracted them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll thank your services. I think we should have them come and and, you know, we, uh, do a blitz, if you will. We we had a blitz here because of uh, dirt bikes, et cetera, uh, going through town and so on. I I think we should have them here multiple days in a row.
But don't get me wrong, I understand where Rob is coming from.
Yeah.
In the wintertime, you could have a wood fire in your house.
Yes.
And due to maybe it windy outside, then that could have blown on the next door neighbors. And there's not a, you know, I mean, it's a pretty difficult situation because people do burn wood. And you could get into that, but during the summer months, if it becomes a problem day after day with somebody burning and blowing onto a house, that's recreation more than a house heating problem. You know, it's different, a little bit different. And, uh, and I have spoke myself personally to him in regards to his fire burning at night. And if he sees it, that it is blowing on the next door neighbor's house, then it's to be extinguished immediately. And he did tell me that he would do that, but it hasn't happened. So it is still happening. And, uh, and that's where I think that it's time that we had an enforcement person look into this on the fact that we do have some problems in that area and it's nothing to do with somebody heating their house or anything else. It's time that we to, uh,
Make a point. He's not using it as recreational. If he was, we'd be setting around fire. But he's out in his yard all the time or leaving it. So it's not a recreational fire.
I don't know why anybody would set it, have a fire at door anyway when the temperature's thirty degrees.
We should be careful of the accusations, not that they're not, perhaps, but we should be careful of accusations that we make. We are on camera and we need to be calm and said that, so.
So we're both, and as a council, we've, uh, had a conversation with our enforcement officer about that. We can report back to you. Is that fair?
We, just to find out, um, I went there with the enforcement officer in this case on their premise after five. And we get out, but now on the conversation, so. That, at least that has happened already. Obviously, there's still a problem.
Everyone will continue to look into what options are and, uh, don't stop complaining. And please let us know. That's why they're here.
It's a camera that informs everything he says and where does it go. It'll it'll be online.
The world.
Oh, jeez.
Better YouTube here.
I'm gonna shit enough, Tom.
Now, we appreciate you coming and sharing.
Glad that you did.
We've seen letters and citizens, so thank you for sharing your your concerns.
So I don't, anyway. Finally sets in. I want to leave for a bit more trouble.
Yeah.
I'm a business of the house. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Okay, we will move on to item seven, which is our administrative reports. Item seven one is our report from C A O.
So all to such an immediate share and and you can approach us after noon. Uh, so you're talking the complex project, um, basically without reading this off, say, and and council provided that opportunity to you from a schedule perspective. I would say we're tracking, we're on track, but we have risk from, you know, certain big milestone uh, tasks, uh, power installation, fire inspection, elevator installation, exterior site works, all those things could potentially cause delays if we're not able successfully resolve them. And there's nothing to say or anyone won't or can't, but, uh, those I would list as at risk. Um, from a, uh, just an update perspective, I mean, most people would know, but perhaps those online would not, that the main ice building is poured successfully. I think internally, uh, they've been going and, um, externally, our construction manager all thought it was done well and, uh, the product is very good. Uh, so it's it's a very important part of the complex and by all accounts, it was done well. Um, from a budget perspective, I will dwell on this. I'll let our treasurer, Paul Key, go into more detail. But we are tracking the over, um, we have not heard. Uh, we did hear from Minister, or sorry, from Lisa Busmer, our our account representative that already seen that we'll get sixty-five thousand of this one, or sixty-five we asked for, which helps, uh, my credit is one sixty-five obviously, but definitely helps and thanks for that. Um, we have not heard about the larger ask from Minister Hoby yet. And, uh, we haven't seen resolution of the, um, to the reasonable corporation to the downlist cost, but I think we're still, uh, hopeful that But I think we're still hopeful that we'll recover eighty percent of those costs through that, which will all help. Um. In terms of uh, our requirement for recognition and representation of indigenous. Um, we have meeting earlier this month that, um, where. When Jed, John and myself met with three representatives of the indigenous community. Uh, including one of them, Iris, and I think we largely agreed or sort of understand. Uh, I'll say the sort of thing we'll do for uh, representation recognition inside the complex with the details be figured out. I think we'll look to have help doing that uh, by reconstituting our indigenous consultation committee with the mayor. Uh, Council Smith and and the deputy. Uh, skipping all the way down, and that's where I'll I'll stop with the uh, with the complex. Uh, skipping down the fire department fundraiser that took place. Um, I have to say, I don't have a tremendous amount of details, uh, fire chief may have a few more, but I believe they had a pretty successful. Uh, fundraising campaign which will really help or offset some of the costs that we incurred with fire chief has has talked about. Um, I think twenty five, thirty range was was raised, so that will be very helpful to offset some of these. Um, substantial costs that the fire department incurred in fighting the the storm and uh, in the fire public bridge. Uh, through municipal plan, uh, in reaching out to the R D C, that's number fifteen. Uh, we found out Dylan is no longer going to be producing the municipal plan. That is going back to Regional Service Commission, the problems has abandoned, uh, I shouldn't say abandoned, but they just. They're no longer working Dylan to do that, so uh, the R D C is sort of taking each town and like toner trip and. Uh, others there taking each town one at a time. I was told that our municipal plan work will commence next year. Uh, and I'll take it early twenty twenty five and first or seventh quarter. That it'll be effectively our turn, uh, to sort of. I do to to continue and and complete the municipal work that Dylan previously been commissioned to do. And outside that, I'll save a new commentary on the Wednesday so I'll not conjure up an agenda. Anyone has any question, I'd be happy for you to answer.
Has there been any development on item thirteen in your report?
I've not, there, the work is running, I'm not seeing the final report, so I'm waiting for that, but I haven't some ID wall. You have a chair, but I don't have that yet. Thank you.
Just to uh, uh, in regards to number eleven. Uh, do the fundraising that was done last Friday, Thursday, uh, whatever day it was. Thursday, anyway, uh, the amount was twenty five thousand six hundred dollars that was raised. And when that does arrive, uh, that'll be presented to our account. Because at this point right now, we're not positive of what we're going to be spending. Uh, as some of the repairs are still being done as we speak today. And but we'll be well up over and above that. And as the statement is made over there, um, by myself, to the the group that was there. Uh, a fire of that nature, um, exceeds by our department alone. Not anybody else's and that could go as far as two hundred thousand dollars. From our fire department alone, and they were over a half a million when they include the other eight departments that were there. So, uh, and and along with that, that's water cost that was included in that half million dollars and everything else, which. Everybody don't realize the amount of water that was taken. And we were over a half mil- million gallons of water that was used at that fire. So, uh, and like I said, when it starts going up around that area. And you have a budget of a little over three hundred thousand and you're spending two hundred thousand on one fire, you know, I mean, we're just not ready for that. And it it affects a lot of people at the end of the year when you don't have the equipment. That we technically should have on a yearly basis, but we're not going to be able to buy because of the cost of the equipment that's being. Replaced due to damages that were done at that time, so. Anyway, it was a good, it was very useful with them because the public don't realize the cost. Of uh, people going to a fire today and and every time there's a fire call. There was a fire call of the day, for example, and that fire call was put in with a with a. A a person losing their telephone, fell under the car, onto the road. When it happened, the alarm went in. And it come to the fire department. Because they didn't answer their phone, it's an E M O call. Well, that call had a cost of probably twelve hundred dollars. For that phone dropping on the road and coming in into the fire department. And that's what people don't realize today, just the expenses that are newly coming to the fire service. That was never there before. We never seen that before. In the last twelve to twenty four months, that is growing more and more as people drop their phones. People damage their phones and they don't get the calls and it's too late to get them in, the false alarms come in. And it's costs that are going to municipalities being hours and whatever and and outside with these calls. So there's, there's costs that are going on and on and on that we don't have controls over. And it it affects a lot of people's budgets that don't have the money for that type of cause. So you'll see it, it's growing, it's growing and we're seeing it here, it's growing in our department. And I know it is all the problems, so this is new new information.
Take the town doesn't burn, burn down at more times than once in fifty years.
We want to, item seven two, the finance report here.
Okay, so uh, we put it in your package of course, boys, uh, our year to date to June. Uh, things are tightening up within all of our budgets, the complex budget within one. And then, um, our general and utilities, some of it is related to the fact that in summertime, uh, we have more staff. So we do have more wages that hit our lines for sure. Um, we currently are uh, looking, we're currently in a surplus. But the biggest thing that we have to keep in mind in order for us, the second part of the year. We want to continue to contribute to our reserves as we already did so far uh, in the spring of the year. We want to continue that, we have uh, a hundred thirteen thousand dollars more to go in the reserves that we wish to. Transfer over by the end of the year and of course, the latter part of the year is when the majority of our debenture payments come through. We had some in May and June, uh, but in order for us to make sure that all of our. Cash reserves are in place by the end of the year, we need the second half of the year to go as well as the first half of the year. And we need to manage closer to the chest. So basically, uh, all of staff has been given the, the directive that when you're looking to spend. You need to be looking at your budget and make sure that you are spending within your budget lines. So, um, just so you do realize things are tightening up. Um, water and sewer, uh, we are still adapting. To uh, the changes that we have made in our water and sewer rates over the last couple of years. Uh, we did have one problem that came up in June that made a big change in our budget for June. Where we had been reading one of our customers' meters erroneously since twenty twenty. So we did go back, uh, and we were able to adjust for that customer. But uh, that did cost us an eighteen thousand dollar hit to our water and sewer budget in twenty twenty four. So those things have been corrected, uh, we won't have those problems going forward. Uh, but it did hit us this year for sure, and that's the biggest thing that contributed to tightening up the water and sewer. Um, line item for June. So, uh, reserves, we continue to uh, build on our reserves with our interest payments currently. Uh, up to three hundred and sixty six thousand dollars uh, in reserve now, so that is good. Gas tax uh, funding, we have got our announcement for C C B F. Funding for twenty twenty four, um, a little bit less than what we had. Thought would come our way, but still, um, funding that is available. There is, uh, we have to do a new capital investment plan and we'll be talking about that more in our. I mean, it's an infrastructure committee on plans for best way to leverage. Our gas tax funding and to use it to accomplish goals with regard to budget that we've already. Put out there, not saying that very well, but uh, basically, we have a capital plan in place. We will be reviewing it and making sure that we are on target to use our gas tax funds. Um, the best way we can get the most money that we can from them. Uh, and again, we unrestricted cash is growing. And we have enough money if for, if. I tried to translate it back into how many days on average with our expenses that we have in our budget. Um, and we are growing that we we can operate uh, over a month full time with. And I know that doesn't mean a whole lot, but uh, it is, it's a good number, it is a number that is growing. And we started about a year ago, uh, that number was significantly lower, so it is some good news, but. Do have to remain tight within our budget. So again, we've included a summary of grants that are included within the budget. And what our spending is so far this year, so that we do have, um, that's the next thing we'll talk about. But I did want to talk a little bit more about the complex budget and. Uh, as Rod has talked in the past, we have increased our budget by half a million dollars. Um, within that though is. Funding that we do have coming on stream. That will determine whether or not we will need to go for additional moron from the municipal capital borrowing board. So at this point in time, and this changes minute by minute, day by day for sure. Uh, as when we did up the report last week to present to council. It is looking like we will need additional borrowing from the capital borrowing board. But there are things that can quickly affect that, um. As of today, we did receive a a commitment from another funder. So that changed it very quickly by ten thousand dollars, um. We are waiting to hear from M L A Hogan, like, um, Rod suggested. Uh, we have a number of grant applications that specialist Dara has applied for. That we are waiting to hear back on those numbers. And, um, I mean, those grants are seventy five thousand dollars per incident, so. Uh, again, the complex uh, construction committee had, we do remind them. Uh, weekly when we meet, the decisions from this point on, again. We do have a budget that we need to live within so that we do not have to go for additional borrowing. Uh, we do have our fundraiser on next Thursday at the golf course. We're up to twenty two teams that will be participating and we're hoping to have more. Um, so the invoices have been sent out for that participation and hopefully we can. Generate some more fundraising from that event. So that is everything that I had at a higher level, if you have any questions at all. I am available. Anytime.
Okay, then we want to seven three, our reading representation. John, I got.
You mean everyone? All of us here, um. All of our, all of our program is going very well, uh, fun product is appreciated, the triple C all of the participants. Are enjoying themselves and parents are really happy with the uh, with the location and the fact that they're enjoying. Um, well, looking our.
Thank you, John. Sorry, John, please.
And still pump up going very well, I'm hoping for the insert. Um, weekly ice rentals are filling up with emphasis on additional daytime programs, so a little bit of a change from last year. Um, and then these programs toward me to buy the wrecked apartments, if something you want to do in your house. Um, programs such as stick and park, uh, souvenir skate, parent and posse, rock and skate, and a revan learning skate program. Are going to be uh, worked into the schedule in some capacity, so we would like to have a whole new offering of the complexes. Uh, finish plan underway, the finish room and the um, looking at local craft or looking passes for the community room as well. So trying to get a diverse range of programs in the facility and so far, um, scanning stuff. Uh, operations, Jed is going to be touching more on the operation side of things for the current facilities we have. Um, and uh, cereal, I've already commented on the progression of the new complex and how well it's moving. Uh, I don't know if this was mentioned, but the dashboard installation date is going to be September sixth, so that's an exciting milestone for the project. And our scoreboard is to, um, to live in the next couple of weeks probably next week. Uh, some highlights for recent events, Western Valley Games, they were held in Perth this year, July seventeenth and eighteenth. Arthur brought seventeen kids with them and replaced third overall for participation. We won five third play awards, which is the most by any community, and we brought home a championship banner and some congratulations to all our participants. And a huge thank you to our recorders and leaders who made this a success. Our sports fest is a new event that's going to be planned for the end of August. Um, events include shuffleboard, uh, home run derby and Washington tournament, uh, September Friday. And Saturday is going to have our highlight event, which is the twelve point eight two farmer run through the town. And a multi sport challenge to follow, it's something to look forward to. Uh, farmers' markets going well this past weekend was Christmas in July, a huge hit, and our largest vendor count to date. So we're just going to continue to build on that and, um, a lot of positive feedback from the, um. Presenters of participants on on everything that, um, that was going on in the apartment. And the good trust, all planning going along well there as, um. As per the good trust committee, uh, moving the town is going well and we have prepared all the support that's needed. And just to have everybody know that as everyone's aware, the biggest boat right now from material staging. It's going to be reopened for the long weekend, so the event can still happen and then the work will progress afterward. That's all I have to say.
That's the point information, I know Council Patterson has asked about. I've been interested in knowing how we're going to turn this on, hockey leagues and things and so forth. Would you be able to line up and do this on your.
Sure, yeah, so we start with.
Yeah, I I'll talk personally, the drug I was supposed to read two weeks ago on Saturday and I'm just away and I expect to leave. My only case of footrest, they'll do this, is that there's a lot of different online hockey associations out there that are looking for ice that come down. Not only rear rally, but this side of the province. There's an alternate school crisis that would stop now, there's a gentleman who just specializes on the private gold and they're coaching. So I can provide you probably ten different things on the hockey level side of that and then also maybe contact the game league. See if they need extra each time, you know, to throw us some in spots. Daytime ice has always been a challenge and I think you're at, you'll see your procedures gates and some pumping sticks and. And then we have already discussed the P D A's that we know for for kids, maybe having a program or. Different age groups, maybe, you know, can play for two hour period or whatever for the next little class. As well as, um, storm days when. Maybe the roads aren't fit for buses, but seem quite capable for moms and dads around the kids who don't need it, I'll leave it that. Uh, because that's an interesting concept that they did on their own with the old, where the kids who all get together and continue, so here to reach out and make a good idea, so. So they did, you have a chip for a lot of people and we will meet and advise that message.
Unfortunately, and yeah, as they're lively on that, um. There's still a rainy schedule, even though I say this. There is still a rainy schedule, even though I say the schedule is filling up and, you know, I have a lot of events and programs planned. Um, so I can always move around, especially in the daytime, right? That was one of my, I think their challenge was in the past was filling those daytime slots. But I would like to change that this year and I think, thanks, the the goaltending coach says that's fantastic. And I will be, I'm looking forward to contacting that person, discussing that with them, so.
I I might add to that, there's some organizations other one, you could say rugby, you know, any, any organization that's other sporting, sporting wise for, your friends would love to come in with no cost to any, any place, they bring equipment with them, they'll donate to them, to the facilities and municipalities, schools, et cetera. But they love to come in and do funnix and you could do, you know, you could charge kids, it could be free or whatever, but to get them in using, using that uh, from money advantage, um, I forget the name of the hockey, the sledge shop, right, all those types of any organization that's dealing with equipment for pair athletes and so on, would uh, absolutely be able to pin and and use and generate interest and, you know, opportunities, so. Yeah, good, I, I really like it, John, I see a lot of good things in there. Um, I do have one question, but it's outside of the arena stuff, so I'll let Rob talk.
Well, one, uh, two, we should look at possibly doing a public school. You know, we had it once a month or twice a month, doing the P M A.
So we are, and that's, and that's where, absolutely, and that, and that's where I've been going with the, the rock and skate, so similar to what we're doing, proposing the barn, having a theme events like that. Um. And yeah, just just offering more, trying to create more of a draw, um, that's kind of what I'm going with. Um, you know, there's certain things going into the uh, you know, the launch and eventual grand opening that, you know, if we're going to create a job for this place.
I will be hearing confirmation of uh, the Huskies playing this year.
Yes, ten mic, three mic. Yes, yeah, they have a good coach and um, they're going to be a huge part of them. Off the bar. Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, just to comment here, Farmers Market, I want to congratulate you and your wife, uh, because that really split on Saturday down there, you see the twenty five, thirty, forty cars sitting along there, but people all over the place. That's top notch, and thank you very much. Uh, just a question, I'm curious, how did our repair go on our pool? Where do we stand water usage compared to last year?
I'm, I'm, we, let, you know, that's all we were. So, so Jen, you just want to do your pool? And just cover it down?
Yeah. Can I circle back? Thanks, John.
Thanks.
It was, that's okay, John, it was special Big Bridge Festival, it might not, it might not be for you necessarily, but I know we uh, referenced maybe a month ago, maybe taking that painting, what, we may need graffiti's left, there's not much in there, but before we had Bridge Fest and I understood there was some paint left over.
When I was up at Bridge Sunday, there was a gentleman there painted um, doors that got, or he had got the whole doors.
Okay.
If there was anything to help, he could help, so we had a roller.
Okay, so that's all done. Perfect. I didn't look today and I drove through, but. Yeah, thank you, Leonard. Thank you, no, he might be nice to send back. Right?
Never.
In all seriousness, whoever did it, I don't know who it was, but it would be nice, I thought it was going on myself, but I used to know where the materials were.
They are nice to have them known before.
Okay, thank you very much, John.
Well, thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to our public work speakers with Jeff Patterson. Share with your name, are you here, sir? Come on up.
Don't say it, it's just a bit off.
So predicted.
Um, so I, there's one amendment to make to this, because it's changed since writing the report. Uh, the line painting has commenced. They were here yesterday and we took a drug around the, as you can see in the reports, uh, the street shooting had not happened yet. Uh, but we made a plan so that we could start this, because it's been pulling this up, we wanted to have it down for Big Bridge Fest, which um, he's coming back Friday to finish. It's supposed to be raining today and that's why he didn't show up today. Uh, Friday's a lovely good day, so he's, I, I know, no one's worried. That was the plan that was made.
I'm not sorry, I got eighteen hole golfing, so.
Yeah. Uh, however, uh, he went back Friday to finish the lines. Uh, so that's it for uh, for streets and roads and I want to highlight, um, it's not much in the order, so there were most of any questions. Uh, the big things this past month have been the dedication. Now, I've spoken to this before, but but a big thanks to the two summer scooters who have, like the Bart and Big Skirt. Uh, they were tremendous, and I will say most of what happens is on their shoulders and the minds of that. So uh, we're uh, we're very fortunate to have those two young gentlemen. Uh, however, during this week, we are putting more emphasis on it, not that we are lax on it than the other kind of year, with the big bridge test and the crowds that we're going to have uh, coming through. We are putting more emphasis to it and and trying to make that downtown possible, if that's what we can, so. Uh, that's where our focus is at, with setting up and helping with the bridge house. Uh, ball fields are continuous, uh, a chore for, for our team, uh, dragging most days, uh, making sure they're cut, painted, everything. Uh, soccer field gets cut and painted once a week and that's, that's all drawing when we're around. Uh, the library steps, uh, he then moved the old steps out and assisted uh, White's precasting with the installation company.
And they're amazing.
And they, we uh, did a good job on that and, and the team, they've done, they've done a very great job. And we've got lots of compliments on the Charles Town Park twice, I don't know uh, many of you have noticed, but uh, that was something that will be brought up constantly through us, so with up steps and repaired, looking good, there's larger repair, it should be done in the future, but we fixed it up and painted it up for this year that he gives for me. So, uh, and then starting to shop the maintenance, uh, or it's about a hundred grand. Uh, need some more to get through this back in this year, so. All I have must be focused on it and focusing on both.
Um, you're right, the term has become really good and really thanks to your team. Um, you.
Oh, sorry, in speaking of pool, I did speak over the closing. Uh, so as you can see in the report, we are still moving in about twenty four hour uh, span, we lose, we can't have the water. Uh, we have done through everything that we've been signed as far as above surface. We have no leaks, we did do a larger job on the skimmers earlier this year for, for open school. They replaced for, uh, especially we had a contract, and then replaced for skimmers, uh, that helped with some burn, uh, leak that we had. Uh, as well as the work we did last year of the, the driving, we've moved on to. So.
So you took how many gallons last year per day compared to what?
And a twelve hour stand last year, we'd lose eight plus inches in a twelve hour spin. We're down to an inch and a half in twenty four hours, so we we have improved quite a lot.
Yeah.
So, uh, we were running three barren hills, uh, twenty four, seven, before we started to repair last year. Um, and this year, what we do, um, the guarantee, they, they toss the bearings in their own, now, I guess. Like, we're made it able to stay out of where we want.
And the temperature going to be high for that?
No, the temperature's been very good this year, uh, due to state above seventy, so. Right? That would be good.
Yep. If I need a measure, I might, I can probably get that for you.
What's that?
One milliliter equals one cubic centimeter. Probably figure that out, the volume is if you're.
We'll move on to seven five, communications development report, let me show there.
So as far as social media, you see in the report, I did attend a social media training session on July eleventh, it was hosted by a man who would stop and I've been able to implement some of those tips. Uh, including how to use A I, artificial intelligence to create uh, Facebook posts. So, so that was exciting. Uh, then I've updated the logo on our Facebook page to reflect the new logo. As far as community engagement, I have passed along our events and notices to River Valley Sun for their um, July and August papers as usual, so I've provided the information to them. Um, I did add some little Canadian flag decorations along Main Street, um, and by the post office leading up to Canada Day Weekend. And then remove them after. And then um, Heartland had two articles in the River Valley Sun in early July that I had noticed, one was regarding the end power rejection letter and the other one was about the heart of the Farmers Market, so I have provided links to those uh, in my report for council, if you're interested and you've been checking out those articles. And I attended the Admender Community Event at the Covered Bridge Golf and Country Club on July third, so there were two other businesses that attended that function as well. For our website, I did provide a local package to the website provider. And so they'll be able to start working on that and um, I think they did the survey that they wanted to get some general information, so that gets us in the queue um, for their developer people. So it's expected to take a few months to view this, like they're saying, four months probably. Uh, and so the good news in that, I guess, is our photo shoot that's coming up the end of this week, if weather permits, is that we will be able to get those photos back and provide them to the website uh, provider so that they can incorporate those into the new site. And I've also, I'm going to ask the website provider if they could update our new logo on the old website, since it's going to take several months, so they've actually taken care of that, so that's all done now. And the newsletter, so the July newsletter was distributed the first week of July through Canada Post and it's been added to the website. A post was done on Facebook and I did send a message through the notification system to advise it can be picked up at the town office or viewed online for anyone who didn't get a copy. We did receive some feedback about the newsletter, it was, most of it was positive, we did get one complaint from a resident who's not on a full Canada Post route within the municipality of Heartland, so if you remember um, Canada Post who said, no, it's, it's either all or none of a route. And so that was going to push up our costs significantly, so any of the partial routes were eliminated. Um, and so what, when was it we went forward? If anybody doesn't receive a newsletter and would like to get one thing, get in contact with me, give me your name and address and we'll put you on a mailing list and we'll make sure that we put one in an envelope and put a stamp on it and mail it out to them. So um, hopefully that will alleviate that issue. Then under grants and funding, so uh, the second wave of the Housing Accelerator Fund uh, did open on July fifteenth, so um, C A O, whoever is going to determine if we hire a consultant to do that application because that was a really in-depth application, C A O, whoever completed one previously and it was um, you know, very in-depth and a lot of, it was very time consuming. And um, unfortunately, it was not approved, so C A O, whoever will determine whether it's worth it to hire the consultant um, to do that. And so the deadline is September thirteenth for that second wave of funding. I also submitted an application to G M I S, which is the Rosemore Institute for Sustainable Tourism for a one thousand dollar uh, grant to cover a ten week online workshop to learn how to create story mapping. So this would be something that could be used to create a uh, self-guident tour, for example, and have some different points of interest to talk about some different things, so they would teach me how to do that, how to splice videos and images and those sorts of things together and how to relay the message so that it's interesting and all of those sorts of things, so I'm hoping that I get approved for that so that I can um, can participate in that.
Can I ask a question, Jeff? Will that use Q R codes when people are walking, like if you see a code, then pop it up?
I'm not sure on that, but the Q R code was something that we had asked for in the Downtown Waterfront Revitalization Project. So the thought there was that there would be plaques placed, uh, information plaques placed at different places throughout the town and across the bridge and that they would give almost like a teaser bit of information and then they could scan a Q R code to learn more about what they're seeing or what the history was of the area and that sort of thing. So I'm not sure if this one will incorporate Q R codes or whether it's, it's, it's supposed to do it for G P S coordinates, so so once you and your phone are at a certain location or within the bubble of a certain location, it'll give you the next bit of the tour, basically.
I like that.
Yeah, and depending how, let's, I have seen other ones, um, that they do them for when you're driving, so even when you're in your car, not just for walking, so that you can actually turn it on and it will tell you what's coming up so that you can hear a bit about it and know where to look when you get to the specific point, so we'll see what that.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Uh, and similar to last year, an application is being prepared for R D C to apply for some expenses that have already incurred as well as some that are planned before March thirty first, twenty twenty five, so again, that's a provincial um, the regional development corporation is a provincial entity. And so the province's year end runs from the first of April to the end of March, so that's why I mentioned that date. Um, so there's a number of things that we've already spent money on and some things that need to happen and were budgeted to happen, so I expect that, that's probably, I'm referring to it as more of an administrative type application. Um, so that will get sent in ASAP, once I can get the information put together, because we do potentially have an election coming up that is going to affect um, the province being able to announce grant recipients. So we will try to uh, try to get that moving along, so if, if council doesn't have any concerns, um, for example, I could submit that and you could ratify that at the August thirteenth regular council meeting. Uh. And then planning and development, so there were six building and development permits that were issued in the month of June, totaling seven hundred sixty two thousand eight hundred dollars of construction value. And that puts the year-to-date value at just under three point five million dollars of construction value. And I also provided the link for council's reference to the property tax sale notices. There weren't any in Heartland, but I did give you the link in case you want to check that out. For tourism and events, uh, there were two golf writers who visited Heartland on July seventh and said they really enjoyed their golfing experience in Heartland and said it was a beautiful course. Um, so they had lunch at the golf club and said that that was great and they appreciated uh, the swag by, I started to count and provided them. So we will get a copy of their um, stories or articles once they're available. There's another travel writer coming to our region mid of August. Uh, so we've provided them with, with another swag bag. And uh, they'll be checking out the world's longest covered bridge and surrounding area, this historic library, Anglican Church, twelve eighty two, Moonshine Creek, the cemetery and Covered Bridge's pop-up shop, Covered Bridge Chips, I should say, pop-up shop, while they're here on August twelfth. So Bart Sharp at the Regional Service Commission lined that up, which was great. And we also have another U S travel writer who is, they had contacted Barb at the Service Commission again, um, looking to do a story about where to go in twenty twenty five. So they are doing a article about um, with, with Covered Bridge Chips, I don't know if there will just be them. Um, but uh, because they're planning to rebuild their um, gift shop and museum and tasting area and video tour and those sorts of things, so we thought that that made a really good uh, story that has more than just a local interest to it. So they are working on that, so again, I'll provide that to council once that's available. And rebranding, so, uh, as a reminder, the photographers are planning to be here August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd this week. The weather has not always been great, um, but I'm hoping that maybe runs of weather patterns will, uh, change as they often do. So hopefully, we can actually get some good weather and get all these pictures. So I have, I think, 57 different shots, um, in the schedule that I have for them, so we'll see how that does. And for wayfinding and welcome to signs, um, so that's actually going to be touched on later on. I did have a little information there, but, uh, I've been working on that. And, uh, along with, uh, Jed and John as well, we came up with some different options for the welcome to locations. So, uh, CAO Weber will refer to that later. And I think that's it. The other things are probably going to be discussed, uh, later on. Were there any questions, Juan?
Thank you.
So we will move on to item 8, for regular business. Item 8-1, which is regarding municipal grants and it's the study received applications, uh, from the Royal Canadian Legion and Holsting, more on that. Yes, we can throw those to them.
Yes, so, uh, included in your package, of course, was the actual applications. Uh, so, um, CAO Weber and I did get together beforehand and reviewed the applications. Just so you, council is aware, um, in the past, the Royal Memorial has been supported through our taxes, uh, uh, both through Coldstream and through Brighton. And in the past, uh, $1,300 has been given to the Royal Memorial. Uh, there were ongoing things that they do. What they're looking to do is, um, remove the, the rocks in front of the actual memorial and they're behind the memorial as well. And then they would, uh, take all the grass that is growing up and put, put the, the rocks back down. And they have received a quote to do that for $5,000.
Question. Did they have any other quotes and are they in the competition?
No, this is the only quote that they have, have supplied to us.
Sticks and stones probably would be the most expensive people to do that with.
Uh, and our recommendation that we are proposing from the town is that we would contribute, uh, to this at a level of about $750, which is what the town is recommending we should contribute. Uh, we do have room in our budget. This has been left because we always supported this cause in the, in the path through taxes. As far as the Royal Canadian Legion, this is a new ask for this year. Uh, they are asking that we support them to the level of $5,000. Uh, they are looking at replacing a roof, so it is a capital investment on their side and they give supply a go for approximately $24,000 plus tax. Um, the Royal Canadian Legion has been a huge supporter of the fundraising for the complex, has contributed, uh, over $30,000 and continues to contribute as they can to this cause. This information for, for council, for sure. Uh, when we were going through this, given our budget, uh, constraints that went into, it, we do have some room in our budget, but it's more to the level of $2,500, uh, for this year. And then it was proposed that perhaps we could put $2,500 into our budget for 2025. We did talk to Gary at the Legion if this will be something that they could work with. And, uh, he said that would be acceptable if that is what council chose to do. So that is a recommendation from the town for this spring.
So discuss those in the next meeting and, and to think about them if you have any questions. Again.
Okay, question.
Yes. I, I do want to apologize to require your chief of the fire report that I didn't acknowledge. Is there anything that you'd like to share with that? So I, I just happened to notice it was, uh, an oversight on the air. I think.
Okay, uh, item 8-2, Waterfront Project, um.
So there's no actual required on the applications this year?
We, we're not able, we, we could do a recommendation, we could recommend motion in the next, but, uh, we'll just do a motion in the next. I don't know that if, if fire or city business is.
And both of the parties know that it'll be the next meeting before this is actually made.
All right, so, um, regarding the waterfront project in July 24th, uh, after the meetings with Emily Power and the visits, uh, the members of their operations team, uh, received a letter from the New Wire. A lot of people were shared today when they visited, uh, that, that a letter of support uh, for the proposed waterfront revitalization project, which is great. So, uh, and which also they were very fond of seeing the, of our time line and that, uh, so that was great. Uh, I'd say before I go into some of the details, the heavy lifting on this project has been done by Michelle with help from Gina. And of course, the end goal is, uh, done the work and I think she is, we went above and beyond. And then when I asked him if he could come down and meet with the operations, uh, he, he made a special trip to just do the two people after having come down and met with the representatives of Emily Power before. So, uh, it should be noted that his, uh, support and contribution to the project was superb. And, uh, and excellent, so. Uh, and we worked with Michelle and, uh, they've sort of had a couple of goes, like, for example, in the original project, the library steps were in the project, they were, they went ahead and did the library steps, they came out of the project. And so there's been some minor adjustments, uh, in, um, the content of what is the project. What I've done is I provided a, a table and then a graphic just for visual. So you could see that, uh, currently we're looking at about a 1.6, just under $1.60 project. Um, this has been, we've, I've plugged internally, uh, President Falcone, Special Care. And I've got, sort of looked and phoned through this. Uh, I think it's a very solid, uh, proposal in the end, um. If we assume that, as we can ensure, uh, that the deposit possibly covered by COLA and RDC, that leaves us announced to $540,000 by 380. And what I've done on page three is just provide a chart, uh, that shows of the 380, we think. Um, and we put in what I think were conservative estimates. Of course, uh, we don't have firm commitments for donations yet, but using fairly conservative estimates that are below, uh, what has been discussed, uh, for playground 75, water 75, chamber 10, uh, End Power, that is an example. Uh, if they don't donate the 25 there, uh, which they talked about, we just simply pull that out completely. So, uh, it takes away from the total cost. Uh, picnic huts, for example, donated, uh, could be produced by a school, uh, freshman donation, uh, that would be channeled to the visitor information center, we can have through this under our agreement with them. And it should be noted, like, when we look at the library, um, and I, I didn't go down to the next all because there's a dozen or two dozen items under some of these, they get, it gets fairly detailed. But a lot of the items for, you can imagine, windows, signings, et cetera, um, there are things that we're going to have to pay for anyways. So, uh, by adding features to the library account as tourism eligible, I think it would fall under the larger banner of this project. And we essentially toe to earth with one stone and we can, uh, um, uncover what we would otherwise pay for operations in the next two years of two-year lifespan of this project. And we have 30 in a year and five in the visitor information center. And those essentially come off of our operating budgets, we save, and that's how we get to a, a net cost of 164. But again, that could be, I mean, this is an estimate, it's very preliminary. It's before we confirm especially that the larger donations and playground one, it's going to be lower again. So, uh, when I say in the, toward the end here, uh, page three, having received the letter from, of support from Emily Power and the project report from Dan, uh, from Dan Glenn, the town is in a position to apply for funding. So in the town's view, we should do so as the application window for 2024 is closing fast with the election moving. And, uh, by submitting our applications, um, another thing, other than just applying for it and getting the line, getting the queue and getting funded, we will learn what parts get funded by COLA and RDC, which ones come out. So doing this is not like being automatic, there could be further adjustments. Those are all, um, you know, good things, clarifying things for council. And while that's happening, we can, uh, work on confirming some of the donations and shoring up those numbers. So at this point, uh, I think it, uh, is incumbent or it, it is, uh, makes sense that, um, you do, that council, uh, considers two things. One, uh, we're, we're here, we are really recommending motion to put forth, uh, you know, for the next meeting to apply, uh, for funding for the waterfront revitalization project. So that just in terms, uh, you know, council support, that we go ahead with the application. And then secondarily, as part of this, and this has been advised by Michelle and Dan, that, um, we should adopt the vision stated in Dan's draft report of the waterfront revitalization project. My dear Michelle, it may be, uh, necessary, uh, change what I'm about to say or, uh, or add to it. But essentially, we're saying we adopt the vision, you're, you're really adopting what is put forth in this document. You can read the opening, you know, the overview, but you're saying the contents that are being recommended as specific projects and, and development work is being recommended, it's one the council agrees with. And hence collectively, that is the vision that we're adopting in the second motion. So, um, with that said, I'd like to answer any questions. To Michelle and Tina, maybe better to mention some of the specifics, but maybe, now you might have. But I, I think, uh, internally, we're all, uh, you know, strongly in agreement that, uh, we should move forward with the application.
Great package. So we've read the resolution, Ed.
Okay.
We resolve the council finding our comments and motion. We put forth to apply for funding for the waterfront revitalization project. Council, pardon.
Pass it, second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Here and now, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is carried.
Dear resolved, council of Heartland recommends a motion we put forth to adopt a vision stated in Dan Glenn's draft report on the waterfront revitaliza- revitalization project. So.
Motion has been moved and seconded. And it's. Here and now, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is carried.
I just want to add, uh, one thing. Hold on. I think the projects that this, if implemented, uh, Bible part of getting excitement back in, it's moving. I mean, we sit around this table, media for media, talking about very important issues on the infrastructure, the placing, the, the yardage control. But when you're actually moving the needle for the upside, the interest to come here and, and see what we're doing as a community, I think it's gonna add a different level of enthusiasm, and that was the food complex. So, well, these are the projects that they look at, but they're also one of the best to do. So, and also thank you to Glenn, Michelle, Gina, Rob with all the hard work and the gathering of the right people, right place. We maybe already see and hear this heartfelt message and it'll help to spread it. I'm very excited about this and I hope you guys are free on this page.
Yeah. We'll treat you all to coffee tomorrow with excepting you, but I mean, you'll get. What do you drink there?
Hot water. You're like a cat.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
Item 8-3, Municipal Signs.
So, um, this is, uh, one of the manifestations of doing your brand, bringing your new logos. Now, when the mission of doing the signs, you can, um, add them through our, uh, Miss Town and, and sort of, uh, tell people where they are and who we are. And so, uh, before, I'll, I'll just do a quick run through, Michelle will go over some of the details of what, uh, sort of I'll call it, a group, um, of John, Jed, and Michelle discussing, you know, and sort of how I tapped on to the end of it. Um, but in any event, uh, there's kind of three groupings of signs, uh, reviewing, um, standard visitor parking and those sort of basic signs that were having, uh, wayfinding signs, like industrial park, not damn, damn, the region this way, the way, et cetera. And then there's welcome to signs. So, uh, I considered the first two things just clearly administrative things that council has been doing. We dealt about exactly where the sign goes, we have this wayfinding. So we've internally, that group that looked at it and sort of sorted out those details and sort of, we have a game plan as to what signs we're creating. The welcome to signs, how, on the other hand, are a little different because, uh, there's a, if you want to call it political dimension or community dimensions here, then which, what we're doing is you're, uh, you're not only telling, the sign tells you where you are, where you might want to go. Uh, in this case, it also provides some sort of representation of the community. So what Michelle will show you, and what you can see in the very first page here, is that Heartland's comprised of sort of, like, from a postal code standpoint, 30-plus communities. So, uh, you, you know, and, and so considering that probably impractical and inadvisable to, it's not about 30 signs or 60,000 or what have you, uh, then on what basis do you decide, uh, what welcome to signs you do put out and where you put them? So with that said.
So, uh, because I mentioned earlier, John, Jen, and I meant to try to determine some different options that we could present to council that you could use to consider, uh, which communities it makes sense to have one of the welcome to community signs in. So we do have some funding for this, but as CAO Weber mentioned, there's not enough funding to do 35 signs. Uh, so I provided a summary of the number of addresses. So this was some data that CAO Weber had pulled from our, um, property tax roll. And it shows the number of addresses in each one of those communities. And so I use, we use that as the data for one of the options, basically the second option. So the first option that's on here, though, um, was signs placed at major provincial routes where a full community starts and ends, uh, or starts or ends, I should say, depending on which end of it you're at. Um, so there were a list of eight that were recommended there. Option two were based on, like I mentioned, this address list, uh, as far as the top eight on that list. And option three was at the evermost borders of the municipality. Uh, now keep in mind, the, you can see on the back of my sheet here, the, uh, welcome to Heartland sign. So these signs would be in addition to the welcome to Heartland signs that we've gotten replaced. It's down here in the, the median, which is currently one there. So there would be a new one placed there to replace it so that the downtown has a common, um, theme and, and it just looks more unified, I guess, when people are coming in. So, yeah, so based on that, I think CAO Weber had some feedback on, on, uh, the three options that were presented.
So, uh, of these three, I thought the option one ultimately was, uh, the best. And as it put, uh, signed on all the one-series roads, uh, the main entry points into the town and larger areas, plus there's an addition of, you can say, Somerville, for example, is not, it's not an entry point. It's in the middle of, um, that side of the road. You, you, you cannot go directly to the middle without crossing, you know, to Victoria Corner or, or, uh, sorry, yeah. Don't say that, no, sorry. Anyway, it is Victoria Corner, um, or Waterville or something, so those are the entry points. So that list is sort of, for the most part, it's the entry points with a couple of exceptions of Victoria Corner and Coldstream as distinct communities, you know, that, uh, it seems to make sense to represent. Um, and it's, it's, uh, if you look at option two, uh, a number of addresses, obviously briefly. One of the challenges is basing the decision on a number of addresses is that, what you're really basing it on is the geography of the summits and the population density of certain number, certain types of the, of, of the town. So in that list, you won't see, like, Victoria Corner, it won't be. So in that list, you won't see like Victoria Corner, it won't be in there, you don't, even though it's obviously an entry point. And our largest population we found in Brighton, and it happens to also have the most number of those thirty, there's the most, a very small area, so. In a way, it's, uh, prejudicial, if you will, against Brighton. And because just so happened to have a lot of small, very large and very small, maybe it's more than three, four, it's gonna make them want to be addressed top, you know, eight or what have you. And the evermost borders, um, the challenge with some of the evermost borders, and you can think right here, the highway going to Forestville is that. Uh, the two communities that you exit Hartland through, we have slivers of, we have the smallest percentage of those geographies and populations. And so you think, wow, um. With every one of these, like always, I've since seen, except one of the challenges that, you know. Welcome to Simon's community of, of Hartland, um. We're either sidewalking to sign in the community of Carrot and North, uh, it's. If you don't do the whole community, uh, if you, rather, if the whole community does not reside in Hartland, then you, you have that, but. You also, with Simon's, we have very large chunks and a pretty substantial population, and it's on a main level. So that is all to say that, uh, I, I think council probably, uh, you're, anyone. Left with this decision is left with sort of looking at a number of criteria and trying to combine them in some sort of pragmatic sensible way that balances. Representation with what a sign does in the first place is tell you where you are, who you're, uh, where, and, and where you need to go. And, uh, and where you put the welcome to signs, so that's. And of course, the other thing here is that, uh, this is not a once and forever decision, uh, one could always revisit this in a year, a few years, or three years, or add up or top up signs, so. It's the initial wave of signs, if, or the first setting signs, uh, we have, so. They, it's not a simple, obvious decision in any way, which is where I think our group intern came up with three alternatives. Um, all of them have, you know, like, ability and relevance, uh, I think here today, probably the first is. Uh, remotely the best, uh, really fourth. But, uh, that's for you, and how's the council discussing the sign? Oh, I might add, uh. Uh, just admiring with the welcome to Hartland sign, we're not replacing, uh, we're just indicating that it's up there where we all know it is, uh, but we're not replacing the new sign, that's safe with it, it's. Even it's on the map. And these are approximate locations, uh, that are not meant to be, you know, take the Latin longs up into specific geography of having those areas.
And you're sixty by thirty.
That's right, and then Michelle, you can maybe provide a little information on, yes, we have a layout of the sign, was it the size and, uh, you know, double sided?
Yeah, so maybe sixty by thirty, it would be simple sign because you're not saying welcome as you're entering the accident. Um, so yeah, there's just standard two posts. And it will be made of reflective material, that's no good in it as well.
Will you say there's nothing on the back to say, see you later, come again? Well, no, well, tumbleweed swinging between the, uh. I, I obviously we have to take a pragmatic approach, you guys have broken this down quite nicely into different groups and, and, you know, applied some logic to it, uh. I do think down the road, we should, as you said, Rob, look at the other three of these with getting a sign in there too, with, think of, you know. The fall of the year, people are driving to see the Hartland stands and they're coming up to see the colors or they're coming up to see bridges and. And they're out in our more rural, rural area, and they may not be sure where they're coming into because they still don't have good cell service out there in many of those areas, so. I do think that we, we should look at a staggered approach and make a commitment towards increasing signs and. And I think logically, the way you broke this down is the approach that probably should be taken, uh, you know, in a, in a two or three year period tone.
Would you suggest they be the same signs or something?
Well, I guess cost wise, you could always do an analysis of what it would be, maybe you, maybe you already know that.
Oh, could read from, you know, you had some just these signs and the, the ones in, uh, so one for Hartland, it was slightly smaller, it's fifty by thirty. Which is larger than what the one is in the median now by about two feet, uh, two feet wider than it is and. It's handier to road, when you're driving along, you're the lower speed limit, it's going to be noticeable, um. In the, in the outlined areas where the speed limit is probably higher. Um, than what it is right in the downtown, you do need a slightly larger sign so that it don't look like I wasn't standing on the side of the road. Um, but yeah, these were the, the numbers, um, generally able to bring in some sample signs that we've had of others. Uh, other types of signs so that we could get a better idea visually of what that is, and, and we simply don't want to put a billboard. In these communities, we don't want people to feel that it's over the top, but it's nice to acknowledge, um. As you're entering the different communities.
And Michelle, we've already received costing on installation and materials and so forth, so we kind of know about what this set of signs should cost.
So I think John was working on the installation piece of it, I did get the help for all the signs, including the, um, wayfinding signs. Um, and so that was within our budget and we had enough left over that should have allowed, um. Or whether it's one post, two posts, if somebody's come along, dig, you know, all the labor that's involved in that as well. The funding should be sufficient to cover that, uh, against funding was at eighty percent, so we will be paying twenty percent of that bill.
I would think single post on the, you know, the far reaching areas down the road, but I can't tell you what size sign that would be. It would be, in my mind, it should be twice the size of a stop or a. Speed limit sign or something, you know, it's gonna be noticeable, but it also has to be placed in an area that, that isn't going to be hit by a snow pile or whatever gone by, so.
The one there's sixty inches by thirty inch high, so they're five feet wide. Were the ones in, um, the former L S D areas. That are decent.
Was a little smaller, I mean, double line of speed, like, it's a V I form sentence, uh, the double line.
But they're certainly very sharp, so. Wouldn't we be counsel's pleasure?
When we, C A O Weber had just said, I think there is a little variation, maybe to double check that beside you. Um. You know, right off, Rob, this option one that is in this presentation, is it not exactly what you had in the internet?
Uh, I just checked that and I believe it actually does, uh, yeah, because we all need to master it, uh, you know. There's mine, there's Hartland, and that will still be mine, I think, but this is a little bit, yeah, it's not the same, you know.
Cause I can get you squandered tomorrow, so even at the wall, I'm not, and we can hopefully get somebody lined up to let us solve them.
Where are your organizations?
So A and D Communications, um, they have provided a lot of the work on this when we did this previously, when we started the project. Uh, they did a lot of the graphics work, uh, didn't charge us for it. There were several hours of graphics work, um, and we had approached another business. And they didn't get back to us at all on it after a few attempts. Um, so since, since A and D had done a lot of the work on it, that was why we wouldn't have to move forward with them in good faith.
It's like six.
Steel of wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jared, you have the information, we've submitted, any contact with COVID, I think. COVID X lines, fifth eleven, vote for the entire whole kit. To get this out and install it, so we have it.
We'll double check this down when you follow along. No, you're tired.
So is everyone, uh, Councilor Smith has suggested option one, I believe, is everyone gonna wanna start thinking that thought or?
Uh, the only follow I have is when you, when you're driving through the different counties of the province, you have those signs that say, proud of county. And I'm wondering if we did a map of our district of proud north and places the signs as you're entering the main roads into our county, is that, is that option kind of three, is that?
Say it again, if, we, we did them in all the one series entry point.
No, what I'm saying, you wrote down, say, what's this week, uh, one, 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 four, and wherever the cutoff is. For example, Peal, Peal, there'd be a sign saying welcome to Peal, and then just travel, travel all traffic coming this way, welcome them to. Hartland, if they have Peal, then that's the address, so if they're going down the river that way, as far as where the cutoff is, we could do the same thing.
That will be tough to do, that will grant them.
Yeah, that would be the same thing, and then maybe you could give me, well, I'm just wondering, are we, are we, is there any talk of that to kind of outline our parameters?
I was, when I, option three, it was referring to when it starts with the first entire community, because, um, I think that's three, wasn't it?
Yes.
Um, oh, no, maybe option.
Why would we need a sign?
Why don't you need a sign, Dan?
My point is, our, our objective would be welcome anyone in who aren't existing. And because what you're saying, and I don't want to say this publicly, but I will say it publicly, is you're saying there might be appetite down the road. To put signs up in more communities. If you put them on the outside parameters to start with, that's the reasoning we did that, and then if there was more funding, we could then funnel into other communities. But the reason we wanted to say thank you as a group for entering our community, that's my only, it's a logical way, it's a logical placement. It's all, that's, that's the only one.
I think to that point, um, the adjustment could be made, and then I think was what Michelle may have originally proposed, she can correct, but. They're working, the only, the only signs that are made from the first list are the ones for Peal, and I'm gonna forget the other one, is it Lansing?
Peal, Manstown, um, Pembroke, it's all your own, so the reason we didn't recommend. Doing those is because you're there, and there's gonna be a sign up that says, welcome to Peal. Well, Peal started back there quite a ways, so it confuses things when you start using that as your entry point sign, that's also, that's why we had said. We waited until the first entire community instead of putting it, um.
So it makes sense, it makes sense, just trying to explain to those people, how come we didn't get noticed?
Yeah.
No matter what we think, that there's going to be people asking, how come we didn't get noticed?
That's why I suggested we, we take a two and three year phase approach to include signs in all of those other areas.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, this, this money was the one time. So we have to put that, the budget to spend five or ten thousand dollars every year, and let's call it spade to spade, how many of these signs are gonna be. Removed in August, right? So the more signs we have, the more cost it is to maintain and keep them, and so I mean, I, I just. I'm lukewarm with what's the right way to do it, for lack of a better, that's all, right? All three options are, are acceptable to me, if you want to, if we have to pick one time, and yeah, I, I would, but we have to explain why we'd get that's it.
Like if I, if, if I were to choose, I mean, I probably would go by the size of the community, because this, the number of addresses in the community. But to your point, you know, as long as you've got something. To show why you did what you did, is it for the primary reason, and you didn't do it for all of them except for one that fit that criteria or something like that? Um, I think it makes the.
If we did it by population, um, and we, we walked the first date down, we could then have Mayor, you're just coming with this budget allowance, I guess, I don't know. Anytime you have to pick a community over other community, it's nice to have a concrete justification as a group. So, well, I think that we have X number of dollars this year that we didn't have anytime previously, and you can't get all the signs done, so pragmatically speaking. You know, there was some logic applied to how would you make a selection? And, you know, I think you guys did a great job narrowing that focus for us. And, uh, we, you know, we can make, uh, an intended commitment to try to get more signs out there, I think that. I think that does well for all tourism, for all citizens, it's not to minimize, um, any one of our taxpayers or citizens by having to live where. I think you just have, your, I have decisions I had to make at some, at some point, I think that's pretty justified. So I guess the discussion would be, and Rob had agreed, hey, well, I mean, as a council, do we want to place them on major provincial routes? Or do we place them on population based routes? And have that discussion, I mean. I say, that's the question, I mean, if we, if we agree, get them with order, don't make long sense.
I would just say, to my mind, there's two, there's two things you want to think about. Uh, representation broadly speaking, right, for communities, so you have thirty five and you don't, you're not doing thirty five, so. I mean, who do you represent, so in that, there's no way that there won't be losers if you're operating on thirty five. Second thing is, is that what does a sign do, it tells you where you're at. And so right now, um. At, most days I drive by that Hartland Town Line sign that's up the road, tells me you're now entering Hartland, or when I'm on the highway, it tells me that. Uh, I will take this turn to get into Hartland while, while I'm already technically in Hartland. Uh, so these signs are there to also tell you that, oh no, like, it doesn't, came to a single handed, but you're now in Hartland, now the trouble is, like, if we look at Upper Brighton. Upper Brighton is the first whole community that's in Brighton, Pembroke is split. So, um, and if you look at Wakefield, Wakefield's obviously split, but. Uh, Wakefield, when you come down the old, I think we all trans standard between Hartland and Jacksonville. Um, that's where you come into, you know, Hartland, so you're telling me this, you're now going from what would be Woodstock to Hartland, you know, I'm in Hartland. So it does those two things, not strictly representation, if you, I, I have the unfortunate, I'm in a disadvantage saying the ones that by population. Would they be clustered on the inside, it doesn't put them on the perimeter of where your entry points and where you're coming in, some yes, some no. It puts you in turn on, so, but even what we've recommended, you could, you could look at Somerville, that's an exception, Coldstream is an exception, it's not on the borders, not on the perimeter. But it's indicating a community, um, that exists in, in the case of Somerville, it has all its population of any, not, it isn't a full pattern, so. It, uh, as a, as a, from those community bases, most addresses, so, um, that's the, yeah. So it, it, they're all bases upon which you could decide that it was a combination of representation and. A sign function is a sign telling you where you're at. In, in a case where there is nothing right now, and someone who drives into Hartland every day from different directions, it tells you you're now in Hartland when you land.
What is there, and, and maybe, maybe this is part of this, but what about infrastructure, like, when you say Coldstream, they have a, a hall, actually too, I believe.
They also have their own community center.
This would replace that, or be on top of that, or?
Be careful, all my friends, you wouldn't replace it, like, maybe, um, you. You would.
Might be a position, but my argument is that, that's not what I'm trying to raise, I'm trying to raise that if there's a, Waterville has a community hall. Um, some of these areas, they'll have infrastructure that would, I'm, I'm just saying that might be an advantage to have a sign. Meet us at the Waterville Hall, if you drive by signs, it's about the water there.
Yeah.
Uh, meet us at the Coldstream W I R, maybe that'd be the right one, who has some infrastructure, I can draw people there, they'd see the sign, I, I don't know. Again, I'm not trying to confuse us.
There's already an existing sign.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid we replace the Coldstream sign out there with a welcome to Hartland sign, that's gonna be painted over with.
That's not what I'm playing.
So I think, throughout the process, we're thinking infrastructure, we're thinking of this, and we're thinking representation, population. I could be wrong in saying this, but option one seems to be in good, in all sense.
Yes, I agree with that.
Do you have a problem?
Uh, that's something else, you mean.
No, no, I can take one by infrastructure, so Rockland has the triple C, right center, I'd leave its address in Rockland.
Where is Rockland?
At Coldstream? I'm not, so when you're driving at the, uh, Rockland. You could trade, you could trade.
Because it's cold, so maybe it has a sign.
Go through Rock.
It's a second sign. That must be more. I mean, it's good to do, you know, and be respectful, yeah, it's not what people's, um, yes, and they, they, they raise the money to.
Yet, yet, another way of looking at this potentially is that are there any signs in option one that you wouldn't put out? Well, the possibility you might add two or three, twelve more.
That's obviously the question you'd answer.
What's one we have this year? We have to, we have to find.
But I'm saying, if we get, if we gauge the thought process, right? Result, because I mean, when I hear the vote on this community, we feel as merit of the sign, that's not what I'm here to do.
No.
I'm here to, and I'm okay, don't, don't be wrong, don't, don't feel like I'm trying to chastise, I didn't need these decisions. I'm just saying, as a group, this is why we've spent this thing. What makes them make sense from tourists, from the wolfers?
Yeah.
You know, this is a great thing. We have money to spend on signs. Who would have thought last year this time we didn't have this? And this is a great thing.
So of these signs, or of, of these suggestions. How many already have indicators of you are in one of the, or you're in Colstream?
Colstream is.
Time should be placed under for tourists, because people don't know where they are, the locals, they don't have any intention of it anyways. They know where they are.
Don't leave Brighton, because Brighton broke up to Overdale. No, no, they're, they're, they're green.
The same line, this one, and then they're green, the white lines, the state and provincial. Yeah.
So everybody is tagged. It's the name.
Yeah, they're there.
Okay.
Unless a sign's been taken down or knocked down through some things.
I understand. And I, I understand the thought of trying to explain this, right? But I do think it's not, it doesn't come down to one detail, it's logistics. Population, um. You know, infrastructure, right? It comes down to all of that. And I think you pick an option out of all those, greatly important. You have major routes for traffic flow and logistics. You have larger population densities in this city, and you have in traffic accidents and these incidents. Like, it's, it's. I, I believe it's there, but again, um. It is up to council.
Yeah, we did, interesting, though, I, I don't know if one of you's best, if Colstream does have a sign, maybe that's.
They all have a sign, yeah.
Well, but a significant sign.
We all have the little remaining signs that province puts up, it says just one word. But Colstream has its own community sign that it finally is for and installed in final. And so who do you, who would you speak to?
Do you have any sense of the parity in speculate? So would they, do you think they would prefer to just have that one alone and not have a second one? Is it easy enough to just deduct that from the list? Which is what I would think.
I'd like to speculate, but with, with a phone call, you could find that.
Yeah, I think that's important, pretty.
I think we can answer this by, by just saying. Are we all agreed that option one carries the heaviest traffic usage of any of the options?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the, that's the, that's the legit reason for that.
And that's criteria you were looking for, which that, that is, that's, that's no traffic, and, yeah, that is a objective, close to an objective.
All that means is that we're being really considerate. I think that our over examination of it means that we value all the communities, right, that's so.
We don't want to leave anybody out.
Right.
And that's, and but when we first started the amalgamation process. Every, every community wanted to know that they were going to be left on the map and that they weren't going to be overridden by, by, you know, the word or name Hartland, so. This provides that ability to.
Have we covered the eight three?
I guess so.
Uh, item eight four, logo guidelines.
So, um, in your package, you have this document. And it's ten whole pages even. So, um, I think what our plan is, uh, we. Maybe Michelle advised or we considered some sort of motion that where we can't have an official motion, this is a recommendation, um. We did have one in here, uh, that might be, but the point is, uh, that it's an important thing that council formally adopt these guidelines, so it's the rule. And they might even, I think, uh, Michelle has noted in, um, Florenceville, Carolina North. This was accompanied by a policy that went beyond the logo that I got finalized, which are somewhat technical. There's a sizing, placing, and so forth, that, um, like, the rights you, like, what rights do we extend to third parties and showrooms? And they can use your logo, and what circumstances would be allowed people to use, other organizations, and so forth, do that, et cetera, et cetera. So there may also be a policy. I don't know that that policy would be ready in two weeks. I seriously doubt it. But, uh, what we'll plan to do is a, is our next meeting of council is the rule. And this was produced by the company we contracted, uh, Web Solutions, and produced this in consultation with Michelle. And, um, yeah, it's a, it's a good document that helps us internally. Um, you know, consistently applied this to files. Uh, you know, signs and other things where we can put in our own stuff, our website. What's that?
On page seven, in the middle of the bottom row, there's a blue bird thing. Is that acceptable? You like that, do you? No, it's cheaper to reproduce if it's in one color and thus far all of the other acceptable and the usage is well brought on.
The only thing I've ever heard is a complaint. And these are from people that are not, are right inside these. If you thought comments always have been made to me by two people that have so far, you guys not know where the sidewalk is on your bridge?
I both said.
There are two, the two people that have made comments to me said, what's wrong with you guys? And counsel, do you guys not know where the sidewalk is on your?
It's on that side every time I cross the bridge.
I know.
It's on the best side.
And I explained that to them, but that isn't how they took it.
It's on the best side of the bridge.
I'm just telling you that the comment that was made to me, so.
Probably made by someone over here.
No, it wasn't. It was from somebody over in Somerville, one of them.
We'll move on to item eight five, off-road vehicle regulation.
So this is really for information, not decision, and varying, you see, the time transfer graph, and these off-road vehicles. I'd like to see though, or get some occasion that that would be a, a good investment of time. My path is, if you have a list, but what I found just in a high level is that, uh, and to be clear, this is a product of probably one day's work. Three through two acts, the off-road vehicle act and the motor vehicle act, that I scanned, which you may know is three hundred days. So, uh, but I, I went through, and I extracted, because interesting, in, in looking at this, I talked to, I think. That was Michelle or Tina gave me the telephone, gave us a day sports, and this, yeah. Just talk to someone there, talk to someone in Fredericton, actually talked to Bun Daisy's nephew. Who was still a, a bylaw enforcement officer in the city of Fredericton, twenty-eight years in the R C and T, called by twenty-two in bylaw enforcement for the city of Fredericton. I thought what they did was off-road vehicles, still working, um, still employed. Uh, and, and looking at, uh, there's actually, it was interesting, I think there were two. Bylaws that are in the works, and they made in Salisbury, and they forget Shag. Uh, but there's several that seem to be, it seems like this is something that other municipalities are doing right now, is looking, raising the bylaw. And they're largely reflecting in their bylaw, the legislation that's in, uh, the motor vehicle, or sorry, the off-road vehicle act. Now, which you can read, which I, I thought, but I may not have put a, want you to, and, and. Anyway, uh, got a copy hopefully that we reference. Um, so I think there are a few things in the course of doing this. Um, we're looking at this, uh, the off-road vehicle act limits in this boundary to. They charge at one hundred dollars per, uh, infraction, but if you look down this list, each one of those could be an infraction. So when you don't have a license on your, um, vehicle, the headlights aren't right, you're not wearing a helmet. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, as you go down that list, those charges accumulate. I don't say that out of eagerness, just to say that. The one hundred dollar limit isn't quite as, uh, you know, you know, you only charge a hundred, that's not much of a, actually, uh, typically, in one of these cases, you'd have. Um, you know, the, the infractions would be multiple, uh, per incident.
Does this also allow a municipality to allow?
It does, it does. So what you, um, it, it certainly does. So that, I mean, you see that in municipalities, um, in the off-road vehicle act, it says. Uh, explicitly in one section, maybe, that municipality is allowed to create regulations to regulate these sort of vehicles in their town. And, and some towns, like Woodstock, have allowed it in particular roads and their bylaw, even driving.
But that's, they, that, that was.
They allowed it and then they. Pulled it back, yeah. And then, um, but other towns are allowing in certain areas, uh, um, or certain streets.
They're designating certain areas where you can con, you know, uh, connect with it first.
I mean, one of the, the complaints or the concerns raised by council has been like, uh, the people who drive motor vehicles, uh, or sorry, like dirt bikes. Um, there's no license, there's no way, you know, you don't know who's driving a bike and who's biking. You can actually, I've heard that, oh, you don't have to, you do have to register them. You do have to have, you can say you have to have a license plate on them, but it must be visible. That's in the off-road vehicle app. So then it's a matter of enforcing, and to enforce it, you have the peace officer, the R C and P can do this, et cetera, et cetera, so. And I did also talk to the R C and P.
There are, there are a lot of dirt bikes that are not street legal bikes. They don't have signal lights on them.
Uh, uh, there are no dirt bikes.
And they're going, they're going up and down.
To be clear, dirt bikes are, by definition, none of them are street legal. There is no.
Oh, yeah.
Street legal dirt.
Oh, yes, sir.
No, there is not.
Bikes that are street legal.
Motorcycles that are street, if you're categorized as a dirt bike under the offer. I'll produce that definition next time, but they are not.
The ones that you're seeing have blinkers and headlamps and so on.
They have to have headlamps, signal lights, and stoplights, and they are street legal.
Well, you can get kits to convert your dirt bike over as well, as long, as long as you put blinkers, the headlamp, and the taillight on. You can take any bike and convert it to street legal that way.
That's right. I was a motorcycle safety instructor for eighteen years, I don't know what I'm talking about.
See, why do you preface your statement that way? Oh, ye of all knowledge here.
Uh, no, no, in all seriousness.
It's all free dirt bikes can do those things to it.
Um, for regulatory purposes, uh, just a, a form of information, I had a meeting earlier this week with a couple of our community members. Related to the trail, a follow-up from one of our previous meetings, and, uh. Certainly, with the work that has been done to the trail, and the crosswalk for those that walk and jog, it'd be awfully nice if, you know. If all residential vehicles stayed off of. The walkway, the track, which, uh, the railway bed, the better turn. Throughout the, you know, proper, I guess. It would be awfully nice if they had an alternative to drive on a couple of streets from a regulatory standpoint. To eliminate a lot of potholes and a lot of the distractions that was occurred. Yes, if they felt they could be on the, on a street, I think they would be. Um, that doesn't negate the issue of dirt bikes with those that have either loud mufflers or just don't want to ride. Carefully, not disturbing other people. And, and that was, I observed that yesterday at the, uh, at the grocery store. With some youth that were sitting outside on two small dirt bikes, and they took off with a kid on, um. Or the, the small skateboards or the little electronic tool.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a hoverboard, and he's holding on the back fender as they go down the street, like. But they were doing, going to stop in the park and walking, thinking, okay, please don't hit my car, first and foremost, please don't get struck and killed. But then when they left the area, right, it was, it was that behavior and the perceived behavior as a part of the score, like, just. Kind of being a nuisance. I mean, they knew enough to pull over, wait for some traffic here. I'm at the four or five, I'm quite a bit out of town. But it's the, it's on one wheel type thing, right, that drives everybody nuts. If they would just puddle on. Nobody would really be bothered by them, or if they didn't spin things up every time they had to press the throttle. But I do think it would be nice to have some regulations, some allowances, so that we would generate that traffic we would want. For each of our canteens or future restaurants, um, to have people coming in. We certainly have to, our, our bridge. Is the only positive way.
It is.
For population to have from side to side.
You're going to do this after a while, you know?
Really, I will next, Rob, one of your points here, I just asked the question, it says, uh, all, an off-road vehicle must have at least a headlamp. On the front, a real taillamp, I don't know, red stop lamp, but it says turn signals, like, maybe I'm. Any of the ATVs I had back ten years ago didn't have turn signals.
Mine does.
Yours new, but I'm saying, if I had a nineteen ninety-five Honda four hundred, they don't have turn signals. They had to have their stoplights. Yeah, so I don't know, I can just be cognizant of that, because some of them just don't come. Um, like, on a, on a four wheeler or anything, they're just, they're not a mob.
Be clear, I could, that, that is all lifted directly out of the off-road vehicle, and so it's right out of the provincial statute. I didn't add anything, those aren't my.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out, if that's strange, just there, I mean, I guess at that point, to be. For these pilot programs to be approved, do you have to have it? Maybe, maybe that's what it is, I don't know.
Uh, it's, it's the current act and like. Yeah, and he's worth asking, like, if you have an older vehicle that does not have that, or you allow it to drive. Or only take it to like, you can drive it on private property, you can drive it in a closed circuit tracks or something, those are acceptable, that's.
ATV rallies like Scanna Ridge, they don't specify kind of signal, you know, you can go on a rally, a federal rally. Right.
Yeah, yeah, whether you're allowed to affect that. That, I think, in order to drive on the road, you have to.
The only I'll say is, if we think it's hard to set a bylaw off or enforce smoke on hems. This is going to be a very, very difficult thing. People don't stop that easily.
Well, in the R C and P, that's, I did talk to, you know, the handshetter, and, um. Well, this is a, why do you? First off, they have no chase rule, right? So they don't chase anyone, they don't chase any type of vehicle anymore. So the only way you can, uh, enforce it is to have them parked, if you will, like in a driveway or parking lot or school or whatever. Uh, so that's how it has to be enforced, and maybe you have to have certain evidence. So if you see a dirt bike hypothetically that's in a driveway. That does not have a license plate, you have reason to enter and then ask about the administration, et cetera, et cetera, then you can go from there. And that is legal, actually, going, um, I didn't, I discovered people, but they can go, if they say, oh, you can't go private, they can, actually. They can enter the property if they see a dirt bike that's, if your rule says you must have. We don't have them said that again. So, um, but if it's at early in the school, are we talking about the senior of the school parking lot? There is no way for a dirt bike to get parked in a high school parking lot without breaking law, right? So if you were to go there while the student or the owner or the driver, I should say, is in the school. You can then apply penalties, right? There's no way they could have driven that vehicle on a road, well, or to the school. So, and it's something that when we first talked to the R C and P, we were looking to, that's no longer the case. So they said they would consider doing that much.
The R C and P stop right here, at my school, and if they're just cruising the parking lot, they check out the license plates of some of the bikes, because sometimes. They fictitiously put a plate on that's not actually registered. And they'll swing in and say, we'd like to meet with the owner of that particular bike. And we'll get to another class, and they help them up and eat, tell them, and, and door, and door fire them, and away they go. Uh, but that is something that's happening more and more, but we don't allow any bikes on our property. Unless they're performed, hooked, street legal, which means they have to have a license plate and, and registration. That's to show it's valid, the other road, like, there's a headlight and so on, so. And the license, they don't have a license, it's two, bike license, yeah. Yeah, so we, we follow up a lot every year with our kids. We allow no ATVs to be on property, no snowmobiles, nothing.
And I, 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 before I, I did receive a call from one person who does not live in Hartland, but was here visiting. Uh, downtown, and just, there was a group of dirt bikes, and this person was quite upset by it. I think it said, it said, it's usually very bothered by it, and, and, and. Not saying that alone was the reason, but it's that and a series of other things that I thought they were looking at.
They're not sensitive to reports of that, and.
Yes.
Records and studies of behavior. They will always do this kind of trouble because, again, this is for factory family behavior, so. We will always misbehave. Always misbehave. Uh, item eight six, wind power.
So I wouldn't say too much except then just for council adding questions, but because we've had. So I, I wouldn't say too much except that in this for council, I had any questions, but because we've had one presentation to council. Uh, raising a concern of wind power and in that conversation, sort of, I would say, there was one set of concerns raised about it. Um, I just compiled and, uh, I think Michelle had a, it is taken from Wikipedia, it's taken from reports, I actually have two, though. Um, the council, which I could distribute, there's a very hundred-page document on the address effective. That was studied by, I think it was, I should remember, but anyway, it's a, a state in the United States, it's a very thorough and detailed report. There's a second one that specifically talked to the, the issue that, the water push, uh, effects that, um, Councilor Smith had raised. So I, that is a very simple, distilled, um, you know, summary of some key points, but, uh, the only thing I might mention is that. When we look at wind power, if we assume for the moment that we're going to add something in our community that provides energy. We can think of all the obvious, um, you know, oil refining. Uh, our planet, and a gas power, my whole country, gas power plant, nuclear station, which are typically on the ocean, but many of them. Um, solar farm, they all have downside and consequences, but if you don't put in, and this is not me advocating, I want to be clear. I'm, I'm just saying, they, uh, it's not me advocating for, I'm simply saying, if you were to forego and you don't put this in. We will consume energy in the face of that, and one energy we will consume, energy that puts tons and tons of carbon in the atmosphere. There will be more oil to compensate the fact we don't have wind, we'll do, you know, we'll run, uh, at peak. Uh, power at our power plants and where I worked on stuff as a student, and, and St. John, Paulson Cove, or whatever. It will come from somewhere, right, so we will consume that energy, so of the available sources of energy. It is considered by most to be the cleanest energy, not with that context, even the much. Um, even the, the much discussed or noted concern with wildlife and birds, in particular in bass. Studies would show that gas power plants kill more birds than wind, wind does it dramatically, uh, smashing them with very large propellers. Gas does it much more, you know, uh, subtly, but much more, it's that soft one. It kills them, yeah, much more suddenly.
So, meeting in Juniper Road, done.
No, I, and I.
Next weekend, then?
It is, and I, I'd like for us to have that put on our website, uh, the district of Pearl Harbor's had it out there for some time. It's being posted at what was the elementary school out there, it's J D I, it's a problem. Uh, there was a link, there's a couple of links, I've got it in my email, uh, we have to register in advance, so it's not, it's not quote-unquote a true open house. In the sense that you can't just drop by, so it's, it's a little concerning that you just can't pop in, um, you have to register on their website. And it's not the kind of thing where there's an open mic to address people, you are going to see some kiosks set up or some stations. That you can walk around to for information to, I guess, ask some questions, and their hope is that you would, any of your greater concerns, I believe you would. Put into a website that, uh, where they're collecting the, the questions and concerns as part of the environmental assessment impact. And part of the steps and stages along the way, I've spent, uh, probably twenty or thirty hours the past few weeks. Reading and talking with people on, on various pieces like that, Rob, um, and I appreciate what's noted here this evening. I read very closely a few reports related to the, uh, wind farms in Mars Hill in Maine. And what the community was concerned about upfront, the questions they asked, the some of the things they were told that didn't actually come to fruition, for example, the note about jobs. Gas clearing some trees, building some roads and bringing some initial jobs, but all the other jobs that they reference, we don't have the expertise in the area to actually do that. So in Maine, all the employees that look after the generating stations and so on, all come from lower Maine or lower United States. They, they come in for a few days here, a week or two there, and away they go, they're not, they're not living in the community, they're not, you know. Um, that's not what they do, so, yes, there would be some benefit for a year, year and a half until the projects build, uh, beyond that, they won't, they won't. Long sustained jobs for the, for the employees, uh, property values decreased by more than twenty percent while wind farms exist because. Of course, who wants to buy a piece of property without churning and the shadow effect and all the things that occurs? Uh, I agree that wind energy is, is, uh, a clean energy, I put the windmill up here at the school. Years ago, I was part of the project, uh, certainly promoting wind and solar energies, but at the same point in time, we've got concerns. Citizens about the proximity and placement, um, as noted here, about seven hundred fifty meters or three hundred fifty meters. Missed out in decibels, the reports say that it should be a minimum of one point five to, to maybe roll a lot of that syndrome. That's, that's affected by windmills, uh, there's a lot of research, I guess, that, that maybe is yet to be done. And some of the environmental impact is, as Ollis said, it's completely, it's not completely, um, there's still items that are concerning species, so. I have a lot of questions, I won't go through them all, I don't want to blow hard on this issue, but, uh. Yeah, no point in saying, the, uh, I am going to attend the meeting next week, and there's, it's at two o'clock, four o'clock, or six o'clock. Again, you have to pre-register for that meeting, I don't know if it's because of maybe limited seats, or perhaps, that they're anticipating. Uh, some citizens have already voiced their concern that those are hours that most people can't attend, um, so I don't know, I have talked with, uh, Mayor Hardy. I think he and I may proceed together out, uh, out to the venue, but, uh, but anyways, there are, there are some concerns. There's certainly an opportunity for ec- uh, economic development that can't be understated, uh, but I hope that's not the only reason to move forward. With the project either, and then, again, there's the concerns that, uh, the Jean raised, or she is here about ownership of the land, where there's freehold land. In place, that is owned by the people, that is, you know, you may have a lease on the property, that doesn't give you all rights to do whatever you want to. Um, so I, you know, from the environmental standpoint, I do have serious concerns from what I read and examined, uh. Another point in case we look at the powers generated, it may be generated less per kilowatt hour, however, um. It's the transportation of that and how it gets funneled down to the citizens, it may be, you may generate that a less rate, that is when you're going to charge less for it. And so when a corporation undertakes forty turbines to, to use of multiple million dollars, the question remains. If they sell that power to the grid or put it on the grid, or, you know, is N B Power going to pay a corporation? You know, thirteen cents, fifteen cents, twenty cents, twenty-five cents, where they got charged, so there's a real question here of what's gonna happen economically speaking. Because in Maine, they developed a wind farm off the coast on an island, and for the transportation of electricity. Then you, they're generating at two point five cents, and it was costing them fourteen cents to travel it. So the cost of the travel of the electricity ended up getting down low to the, to the, uh, individual homeowners. So what may be a break for a corporation somehow, uh, I have real reservation about the impact that they'll have in paying higher power rates. To have those turbines built and thrown in place, I don't see a corporation taking a loss to put those in place. So somewheres down the road, there's going to be a makeup for that, and I assume it's going to fall on the taxpayers.
I'm assuming everybody's getting the emails about the wind farm, the concerns about wildlife, and I'm just forwarding the given.
And so, um, is there going to be more than one public consultation that you read?
Well, I read the document, uh, for the, for the whole process, and it's a bit fumbled, I think I'd have to be a lawyer to understand. There's so many sessions at thirty days, at ninety days, sixty days, and thirty day intervals, and even after all the reports are put to, uh. To the lieutenant governor, where, you know, a little bit, I guess, the rubber stamp for approval, there's about a fifteen day period in there as well. So we are somewheres in the vicinity of about three or four months into, will be a year and a half process. And, uh, I don't know how many additional, um, meetings they're required to host as the applicant. Because they have so many meetings they have to host, to say that they did their part, uh, and that's why they're running the website to collect information as well. But that's an individual who's putting an application board, who's also able to use the information that's sent to them to help produce their, their end report, I guess.
So have we requested that one out yet?
Not yet, and that, and that is one of the questions being put to us through, through somewhere from the members of, uh, in particular, the lady that gave us the presentation, Jean. Is are we going to host one or not, and are we going to invite some people that, uh, that can speak on both sides of the coin? And, uh, so I, I guess, I would, I would question that, are we prepared to move forward and have a public engagement session? And whether or not J D I with Tom or some of the N B Power will come, would all be up to, I guess, an invitation. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see us host one before we get too much further into the process.
If, if you believe we didn't, we take a gene, we would work towards that end.
Well, we can, we can ask to host one, I mean, if, if J D I says they go ten, or if the N B Power or the province in the local ten, I mean, we better. They'll just ask, I see the word. Jean, they provided some of her communication, uh, sort of a, a, a list, if you will, of organizations. Or at least people from different organizations that you could approach, um, to help get us started and that, I thought it was nice to, so we don't have to think about everything, but, uh. Yeah, I, there's certainly a lot, there's some good things that can come from a wind energy project for sure, I, uh, I think that we, we should have public engagement. And, uh, you know, so we know what's going to land, and it, it will be visible, I mean, just because it started on Brighton Mountain, doesn't mean we're not gonna see it. We can see Mars Hill from where we sit, um, it is going to be in the background of our bridge, so to speak, and, uh, with our other residents too. So I ain't concerned about some of those effects that happened because of wind farms on those residents.
Appreciate our next meeting, August thirteenth is our regular council meeting, and August twenty-seventh is our minimum goal meeting. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Councilor Smith, motion to adjourn.
It was a lot lighter tonight than we were last week.
I know, it was a lot of fat and gel, yeah.
I think it's a full response or presentations, perhaps, maybe longer.